A little bit. All right, call the meeting to order. The second item of on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or like? Things to add or take away, you know, here and then. All right, so I need a motion to approve the agenda moved by Chris Ward, second by Council Waddy Smale, all in favor. Moving on to three disclosure, are there cuny area interest of the general nature there are?
Remember me?
I don't think anyone has any, however, I think I will mention it here that. During. Our. Whatever this is called. Uh, community grants and donations. I I think it's worth noting. Um, for the record, while I don't believe that there are any direct cuny area interests on anyone's part. Um, some of us are members of. Uh, an organization that may be on the list. Uh, I don't think that any of us benefit financially from a cuny area interest, that sort of thing. Um, we we would all have to exclude ourselves, I think, from this discussion. I trust in everyone's integrity when it comes to giving out community grants and donations, but I I certainly recognize that. You know, if anyone, any one of us. Could have a perception of a conflict of interest in in this. Um, I'm comfortable with no one making a declaration. I'm not making a declaration. Um, that that will do this in in an honest way moving forward. We have in the last four years and and I know that we will tonight, so just want to say those few words. Uh, so no disclosures from anyone who live in the nature. So. Moving on to number four, which is business arising from the previous committee of the whole meeting minutes, if if there is any, does anyone have any business arising from uh from this meeting minutes? None. Right, carrying none, then we move on to delegations and presentations. And our first uh delegation is on the Bluegrass Festival. And and that's uh Kim Wallace. So come on up, Kim and.
Where you want to go?
You you can stay there, where wherever you're comfortable.
Think I've been at a different. Being to learn about this over the past two years. To live in council, I don't know. One way to church. Um, I'm gonna start off the same as I have on a little bit of history. Most important part of this whole festival is we're not for profit. Hundred percent not for profit. Um, starting the festival back in two thousand and fourteen. All of the Spencle Fairgrounds. Second weekend of August. Uh, two thousand and fourteen. I guess I should back down. It was a festival that did take place on this same weekend um at Moose Creek. And I had learned that they were going to cancel and the whole festival. So I got a whole lot of people that ran it. To verify the fact, I didn't want to. Have a second festival on the same weekend and of course look back, so I went ahead um. Plan, got maybe six people flipping. Uh, today I've got twelve people that run committee. So in two thousand and fourteen. I was about six months organizing this. And. We have sixty-five R B's again. Not to mention walk-ins over the course of the weekend. But just take a big jump, two thousand nineteen. Year prior to our pandemic. We had over two thousand R B's. For the weekend. Um. Over the course of the weekend, we also had approximately five hundred people come through the door for daily walk-ins. Uh, two thousand twenty-two was approximately the same. We did have about a five percent decrease in our attendance. Which was. It was expected from coming back. Um. I can see if you're just from phone calls, you know what I thought. At least a twenty-five percent increase in in attendance this year. Um. We've had people come from all over Northern Ontario, Sudbury area, all the way up. North Bay, that whole region up there, that group of people come down. Uh, Stollin, Ontario. Thank you, God. Emails and phone calls this week from the London area. There's a whole group of people coming down from up there. Um, Western Quebec. I've got quite a few from Western Quebec. New York State, Upper New York State, I'm getting. I'm gonna have more this year, that I know for a fact. Just because of what bands I do have coming in. There's also a bluegrass club that's in Oshawa. She wanted me to send her some advanced tickets. I mean, any third. There's a group, there's a people coming right there. Um, begun. A. Economic impact assessment last year. For our festival. And over three days. We brought in a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to the community. Um. Like I was saying, we we took a bit of a hit last year, quite a percent. Drop in attendance. I was at uh three other festivals. Last year, one in Pennsylvania. Two of them in this region. And they were down quite a bit. Even Pennsylvania was down quite a bit. Uh, so I kind of thought good for the little decrease that we took. Also, we also, we also work with the community. As far as service groups. We do get the kitchen from the Roman building. Service groups welcome in, they'll do a practice for the whole weekend as well as dinners. Um. This year I got uh. I've got an invite out to the fire department. You come in on a Sunday morning to do a bank day breakfast. Um. I've also got confirmed uh with the party, you'll be back this year. This is not just for the for the festival, this is gonna be open to anybody. There'll be tickets available as we move forward. Anybody in town or whoever, you know, they don't have to worry about. It's gonna go with that. Um. Last year and this year, I've seen a a decrease in budget and I totally get it, you know, two years after that and and the way the whole. World's going right now, I totally get that, so. Um. Two thousand twenty-two, Denver Cardinal has donated to the festival twenty-five hundred dollars. Plus in kind, which consists of. Uh, garbage removal as well as opening up the arena for showers for our people who built the course for the weekend. And uh, I thank you very much for that. It's very much appreciated not going to break for my committee as well as on the virus. Most of our attendees, they love to have a shower, um. You know, the ground is clean. And here to make, I think, for the same thing possible. And clothing. Um, there's gonna be tickets. Available for council and the boys. Coming to this this year. Whether it be Saturday, whether it be Sunday. I would suggest Saturday, there's gonna be three headlining bands. Uh, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the boys that was on. On the TV, heard the years with one. He made a great, pretty much the piano. We had him up here two years prior, he's coming back this year. It's got that, and they come from uh Pine Hill, uh Tennessee. Another band I have is coming from Ohio, they've been here before. And uh, new band I've got coming from. Been talking about, they've not been out in this area ever. Excited to see them.
Great, uh, thanks, thanks for that, Kim. Um, certainly, uh, very well attended. It's great. You gave us that extra uh information on the impact study and. And certainly the attendance numbers, uh, that I think. I heard a collective whoa up here. I don't know that we actually, that it was that hot, so. That's, it's fantastic to have that. So, um, open it to questions and I'll just, if does anyone at this end have questions for Mr. Wallace at all?
Yeah, no question. It's all pretty straightforward. Thank you so much for your uh presentation.
I really prepared your questions, but no, that wasn't your point, uh, big crowds, that sounds like a lot of people. No, good. Thanks for the presentation. Yep, you're welcome to stay around for the discussion. Uh, when we, when we do the allocation of it, or or you. I've done your part of the.
I'm on, so if I didn't be here.
No, absolutely not.
I would enjoy this if you're.
Yeah. Thank you, thanks, Kim. All right, so for our second delegation, um, I welcome. Uh, Gina Vasio and Marky Cote from the uh Spencerville Business Community Connections. Come on up. Or stay there, wherever you're more, oh yeah, you're gonna do, you're gonna go through that. So, uh, ten, ten minutes, can we take this out?
Um, well, thank you. So as uh mentioned, we're the new executives of the uh Spencerville Business Community Connections. And uh, we'd like to present to you our first behold to get the. This grant uh for the events that we want to sell for Spencerville this year. Um, more than the events, just a little bit of the background, we're trying to build a bit of the tourism. First, I have to go. Um, did that go as a domain, um, but also we're trying to build up. Um, the tourism uh whole marketing campaign so that we can go outside. Small, around, so I'm sorry, let's spend the last. And we're looking at trying to get uh partnership. We've been talking to Wendy uh in terms of uh partnership from this city, uh, the content to be able to. So the events that uh we've submitted uh and notes coming up, uh, S P C C is looking at Courtney managing. Uh, different uh over the uh, we have the weekend that's. Uh, with the marketing advertising, uh, the full system, the declarations of the. Um, coordinating all different rules and activities right happening during that weekend. Uh, creating also all the logistics around uh temples, so the low quartering, parking, bathroom, base management. Uh, the emergency services. Uh, and also the volunteers uh throughout the year. To have a longer day to day to be able to uh try to recruit uh help, not only for uh overall uh help, uh for the country for events for a month. But also for the activities and the compensation for these activities within the weekend. Uh, we're also gonna see some sponsorship specific areas of the events, uh, so additional funding as well, um, committed to that. Uh, and the goal for S P C P is to try to facilitate and create some incentives for organization increases or mentors. Uh, to do activities and events, um, and then trying to uh help uh them with their events and activities. Uh, it could be some funding, it could be resources, um, so any type of support will be from the F D P group. Uh, for again, in the our our public group, uh, target is to boost uh come inside community town. And spending uh some good, good money in the business area. So the events are uh, just quickly, uh, so these are events that we want to produce annually, so we're building a brand around these events. Um, so we have a an annual fundraiser which is. Uh, where we want to have this in February, this is coming on February, um, and every year is kickoff of the year or activating the events are happening. And also we provide uh a noteworthy value to become a member of S P C C. Uh, so that we can work together towards, you know, creating these big events. These are the uh, um, the festival weekend events, we should have office as well as weekend. Uh, you can see a little, little uh passport in little uh bag, it was given out to give it down. Only around town. Uh, we plan on leaving those kind of things uh on each of these events, uh, passport and red card. Uh, if the passport does not have qualitative value for this group, uh, yes, uh, we can gather the goal with that. Um, for the event, there's uh some activities, some coupons, uh, and also the cap or concept of. Uh, having people stand at different locations in businesses around town, so we bring the, 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 of course, uh, all of the businesses. Enjoy and learn of who are the. Um, so the events are, uh, as I said, uh, this is about weekend, they are around the. Fun of of Easter and uh whole weekend activities. Uh, so this is about her and hopefully we can build on this weekend and just improve on adding to these for memories on throughout the whole weekend next year. Uh, we're not doing this one this year, uh, it's called festival monitors, uh, the concept of having businesses that we have in Spencle. Uh, like the last spots, uh, you know. Yeah, it's a lot of magic, so we're creating magic and making Spencle a magical kind of place uh for. That kind of weekends with a lot of games and stuff. Uh, so that's again, especially before the summer, we we brought on with the hostess, we're not doing this year. But the next one we have is the art explosion and we definitely have a, yeah. An artist, uh, a larger space community in Spencerville. Um, so we're on, we're actually uh, finding this based on the success of actually Mary's art program that she did a few years completely. Um, so we're building on that and making a whole weekend of activities. Uh, we already have about a hundred different market member, uh, market vendors, um, that agree to uh to participate. Um, in this, there's a lot of different activities on the art, uh, and just a lot of that, uh, I mean, here is a base from the. This happened in June one. Maybe like. And then of course, trying to be, again, having some interesting businesses in Spencerville, uh, maybe the whole, uh, pretty four days. Uh, spooky uh activities during the holiday, uh, being a holiday. And then really making the town with different types of decoration contests. Um, with it, you're having a stair code contest for each business to build their own stair code based on their business. And kind of get into town fully and have some really nice ghost blocks and things and all instead of. Interesting, maybe, maybe again, branding Spencerville on that. Uh, for a place to kind of just go around and kind of enjoy the activities they're having.
If I manage to have, I think, uh, just being participating with local businesses in Spencerville. Um, there's already quite a bit of this company. So it's, it just makes sense to collaborate together and uh. And how is it kind of one umbrella during uh and this brand? So you can see that already businesses about. And giving like terrible heart biddies and the Diablo manager and uh Joe Spencer City Burger Grill has come to the house. So it's really just taking all of these little. Signings that have already been occurring and just. I was seeing them together and and marketing as fun.
It's really about trying to push a marketing bug uh in in the way we pass the weekend, uh, trying to raise posters and social media. Kind of raising more of this from abroad, you know, interested in going, enjoying what what's been built. And believing. And then what we do, uh, we also are working with the everyone in the nation. We can leave a business window and try to support the fair and solve, uh, and kind of. Reading uh tourists coming to the fair also into our businesses and so on, so we're still. But that weekend, we're really focusing on. And as we saw out here, uh, Spencle Blue Bill will come back at the end of November and making it feel bigger, it was some parade. Uh, the other activities and again, two day events and trying to get to these families. Uh, to. So our funding request was for four thousand dollars, uh, and also eighty kinds for. Uh, one of the things that we will look at doing is a full study. Uh, down on board and a good organ design to ensure that uh the overhead capacity uh for a good cracking. Thousands of people in town for these activities, we want to know about uh parking spots, uh, water, uh, women. Uh, so kind of understanding, we're. It's something that has been asked with our council, you know, secondary three and some of the south kids that are running down, trying to see how we can design. Uh, not very proud of things that have before, we can really put this to the next level. So we're looking at help, you know, getting some work on the township and do the study, uh, and working again with with uh. Uh, and leave this out, so we, you know, could understand what's possible. Uh, partly, I would support uh these men. Um, uh, the planning of the road workers, uh, we link with those, any of those upstream, um, you know, a century or so to be started. A little bit of a rule to be, uh, with the county to the years of the county. Uh, the office, um, and unfortunately, including vibrations, you know, for the, also, we do that. The funding uh used in uh consistent decoration. And for those different things, so banners, look how banners installed uh through the streets, secondary. And uh, when we work, um, nice banners being on to those events, um, so how you have a banner holders. Uh, and designing uh simplest sort of events, uh, we would use for next week. Not on data, you know, a media issue, it's kind of. Um, and then for science, another marketing, uh, motion, uh, passports, um, so those are then, uh. Probably not going to use those sort of. Um, the uh, you uh also, you know, get that funding, uh, so from members as well, uh, for support and uh, it's something to be.
No, I just, you know, given that we're a new executive, uh, we are really proud of the fact that you've now hosted two events. Uh, Whoville is a very, uh, Spencle, Whoville is very successful. Uh, and we're excited to see, um, these, these branded events grow as we grow with them, um. So as we develop, I mean, right, so we do have quite uh an amazing executive team and as you know, Spencle will pretty amazing in itself. Uh, it's never since this. So, uh, with his presence of this brand, I mean, uh, it will help us grow in the future years to come. And it is our job to form this brand, create these brands so that they do repeat themselves year after year after year with little added. Incentives and uh projections to bring outside in travel tours and can, just as we know, we are well situated. Um, uh, in the travel tourist sector.
And on the, also for the tourism brand, we were stuck with, uh, now, uh. To actually have a office in the, uh, for the tourism thing, so with science and so on to bring, uh, so maybe a season. Tourists want to walk up to the office, any information buttons are coming in.
Good, thank you for the presentation. Uh, and for committee members, who, does anyone on the side of the table have questions from our key arena before we?
Good, no, I'm good, thank you.
You guys?
Well, that was nice. Uh, what I was just about, uh, we talked about volunteers and so did I hear right that you want to create a volunteer database to. To share with people, anybody, the community's volunteers, that that that's going to happen, or?
Yeah, we want to, ladies, uh, so. By communicating with us, uh, if you're looking for volunteers, uh, you can send out emails for a volunteer dayways. Today is exactly what happened, you know, to save, uh, the office of, uh, the public service or airport as well. Uh, so they could call out us, have a show and gather, um, so we're, we're looking at a new campaign, full camp and volunteer. Who likes volunteers, that's what we must volunteer, so they just want to show us and we'll connect.
Great, thank you.
Um.
Anyone else? Uh, I have one and 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 you know, in our report, it it certainly, um, uh, it outlines that outside of the normal purview of. Of what our community grants are in pine portion. Um, is, and I believe it's the report, I'm a little. Just a little bit unclear of exactly, are you asking us to do the report?
So we've been in contact with, uh, with the lady. Yeah, we, uh, yeah, we've been saying that, uh, that was the recommendation to put in as part of this request. Um, and clearly there was some special model that we can't go about it, but I don't. But we're ready to see what what is it take, uh. I just know that we need to get done, so that we figure out what can be done.
Okay, so then I'll come back to staff, I guess that's my question on. On that one, then, do we know what exactly they're asking for, like, before we get?
Well, I think, I think for the chair. Not sure, the post salute. But certain, but certainly not typically. What we provided in my. Right.
Mister Chair, so I I was, I had to think, but I thought we'd have this as maybe when we get to the actual discussion. Uh, on this, is it, yeah, I was sort of talking about, but they're not volunteers, but uh. In particular tourism as well aspect, and I wasn't sure if something in the county, but we also do, so I thought. A week later, I wouldn't do that.
I don't think we're gonna debate at this point, but I think if you have questions that that are relevant for Marquee and Gina right now, they're not part of our deliberations or debate, so. So if you have questions for them, it's probably appropriate. I'm just trying to give a mechanism where if there's a go back and forth so that we can, or if we wanted to. Okay, so I'll hold on about that too. Okay. So outside of the normal scope, but worthwhile having a discussion about. If if the committee felt that it was, because I know it's outside of the normal scope, but I want to make sure that it's a discussion that happened if they decide that it should.
Certainly, it certainly can be a discussion for for committee.
It falls outside. Yeah, okay, good. Okay, just sort of clear, I think it's irrelevant, clear on that. Okay, uh, further questions from our key or Gina, welcome here. I don't see uh any, so thank you, thank you both for the presentation. Welcome to stay and and listen to the deliberations or. Um. Heard. Well, yeah, good. Uh, and we need to switch back to uh Robin, we've got Marquis still.
Can everybody see me now?
Not yet, Robin. There and. Not sure.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Your screen show, sir?
Oh, that's interesting.
Robin, can you speak? I'm on train to the news.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do we need to see her?
No, you, you really don't need to see me. I'm happy to hide in the background.
Are we good? Yeah. All right, okay, so I think we'll, we'll continue and and we'll begin, Robin. We can't see you, but again, as long as you're not doing, your presentation doesn't include. Or visuals, then it really doesn't matter. So, uh, welcome to, um, the committee of the whole admin and op. Oh, there, there, yeah, well, there we go.
Hello.
Uh, welcome to the uh, admin and operations, um, delegation and preservation port for a community grant request. Um, ten, ten minutes typically, we're fairly lenient, you know, a couple of minutes more is is fine if you need it. Uh, and then maybe some questions from from the table if they have any, uh, before we do our deliberations later on, okay?
Perfect, thank you. Uh, so I am Robin Holmes, I'm the Assistant Executive Director for the John Howard Society of Kingston and District. Um, I am uh here tonight to present on the Connect Youth Programs, as Connect Youth has recently come under the umbrella of Services of the John Howard Society. Uh, so I moved into this role after serving as both a dedicated board member and a staff member of Connect Youth. Um, I have now transitioned back to my regular job at John Howard Society and am overseeing these programs in Leeds and Granville. So I appreciate the opportunity to present virtually tonight. I am juggling some family responsibilities today on the holiday Monday, so. Um, so I think most of you are aware of the Connect Youth Services that began at South Granville High School in two thousand and one. Um, those services were established, of course, as a result of the unfortunate death of a young man by suicide. Um, a dedicated group of community members came together with the goal of establishing an organization. That wrapped around young people and ensured that no young person ever felt alone or excluded from their community again. So what was established was a single staff organization in a tiny room at South Granville. Designed to really ensure that young people had somewhere to turn. Somebody who could connect them with community services, with resources, basic needs items, you name it. It turned out that the demand for the service far exceeded what was initially expected. And the services continued to grow over the past twenty two years. What we now have is an exceptional range of services with our agency still very much present at South Grenville High School with not a tiny closet, but rather three full classrooms, two full office spaces and one dedicated drop in space. That we provide basic needs items, lunch program for students, we provide the connections and transportation to community agencies in areas such as mental health, addictions, education, employment. You name it, if there's a service a young person needs, if we haven't provided it in the past, we will find a way to connect them with that. What happened from those initial services from that drop in at South Grenville was we quickly realized that there was a need for housing services in Leeds and Grenville for young people sixteen and up who were experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Those young people may have experienced a family breakdown, maybe exiting the child welfare system, may have experienced a specific trauma that's led to homelessness. So our agency expanded our service to open some homeless serving programs in Leeds and Grenville. So what started in two thousand and seven as one single apartment in Prescott, we now have four apartments with six beds total. And we are recently, we acquired another three bedroom house that will be opening this week to serve youth with temporary short term case management units. So those units provide those young people with a safe place to reside with all of their basic needs covered, while our housing case managers assist them with finding long term housing. So in addition to our basic needs programming and our core program at South Grenville and our housing program, we are also a dedicated partner for the Wellness Access for Youth in North Grenville. That program is designed to streamline referrals for young people needing access to mental. Health Sir North Grenville with specific access points from Kemphill District Hospital and the local family physicians in that area. So a couple of years ago, our agency quickly realized that we were exceeding the capacity of our Board of Directors to maintain these services. While we had an exceptionally dedicated Board of Directors, they were a board that came on thinking they would be managing a thirty forty thousand dollar budget. And they quickly expanded to what was a multimillion dollar service, serving hundreds of youth a year. And we realized the need to to amalgamate with another agency to ensure some some economy of scale, some supports for staff, and really to put in place some measures with administrative rigor so that we could sustain our services. So a couple of years ago, we pursued a joint merger with the the John Howard Society of Kingston, an agency that had been serving Leeds and Grenville quietly for several years through their justice services. And that merger has finally wrapped up after many years of hard work from the boards and the John Howard staff in Kingston. So we now are able to proceed with our services in a way that offers our staffs and benefits pension, really significant administrative and financial supports for our clients. But of course, as we have grown, the demand for service continues to grow. So when we look at our roots at South Grenville High School, what we're seeing right now is a program that we require significant financial contributions outside of our main funding in order to sustain. So I'll give you, give you an example of what's happening at South Grenville. In our core program where we have the dedicated classroom and the hot meals being served daily. We have typically seventy to a hundred youth attending daily, receiving a hot meal, many of whom are indicating that that's the only meal that they're receiving during the day that is of any substance. So our stats that I just received indicated that between the months of January and March, we served thirty eight hundred meals. It was close to thirty nine hundred, actually, in that that room alone. So some of those young people, as I said, struggle with food security at home. Some come because they require the social supports that they're not getting elsewhere. And some come because they connect with our staff and receive referrals to outside agencies, which we then assist them with attending. So this is a program that we are incredibly dedicated to. It is very much the roots, it's the heart of Connect Youth. And as much as we are expanding service to North Grenville and Brockville and perhaps even West in the future, South Grenville is where we began and we remain committed to that program there. So. We are asking the township for support in the form of, I believe it was three thousand dollars I put on our our application specifically for food support. It's no news to anybody that the the cost of food is going through the roof. And for us to be able to maintain this program and provide the meals to young people, we require support outside of our core funding, which is through the United Way of Leeds and Grenville. So we have generously received donations from Grenville Federation of Agriculture, from anonymous community members, churches. And we are working diligently to ensure that our program doesn't go anywhere and that any youth that needs a meal or needs connection is able to continue to receive that at the school. So that is why we are here tonight. I am happy to answer questions or speak further on our other programs, but really the core program at South Grenville is, that's what we're here about tonight.
Excellent, Robin, thank you for for the information. And the presentation certainly, you know, very utilized. Yeah, it's certainly utilized highly in our in our area, there's such a great meeting for it, so. Thank you, I am gonna allow the the committee, if they have some questions for you, to to ask them now because they don't have that opportunity while once we get into our deliberation, so. The same paper again.
No, no, no. That you guys are exploring away there, so. I I have one, thank you. We serve seventy to a hundred students per day. On an average for for one meal. What happens when the school closes in in June? What happens to these children in July and August?
Excellent question, so typically what we do is surveys near the end of the year, so we'll start those in May to really gauge what students have access to over the summer. So we work to ensure that students are linked up with Bonnie and her crew at the Food Bank in Prescott if they required to be over the summer. And then we also work to ensure that we can do private deliveries of food over the summer months. So in past years, we have done activity kits that have some social rec activities in them that we do weekly or few times a week that we drop off. We also do food kits in partnership with the Food Bank where we gather bags of all the basic needs for a week, your your bread, milk, eggs, large baskets that would go out to families that our staff are then out on the roads delivering during the summer months.
Thank you.
Excellent questions.
That's a good question.
Your presentation was good, it's a question that I was gonna ask, so don't be to ask them again.
All right, thank you again, Robin, for the for the great work that you and Connect Youth do and not only in our community, but the communities around us.
Thank you very much.
All right, so moving on to the next grant request, and that is from Spencerville Legion and Mary. Welcome, Mary.
So I'm representing the Legion, I as you know, my husband is the president. That's I'm the Secretary of Public Care. I pay the, I guess some accounts payable. As as a lot of small organizations are, we all build a lot of love shoes. So. We were granted some funds last year, which I think we put to very good use. Anybody who's been in the Legion lately sees the beautiful new flooring and that has really impacted. On the the use of the Legion, and the people are now renting it, we're so happy to be able to rent that big room downstairs at a very inexpensive cost. So we have two levels of pricing, one is for members. So we try to encourage membership in the Legion and one is for non members, but that one's been been used quite a bit. And then also upstairs and flooring. So as you know, some of our our activities have been very well received in the last few years. And you may know that we came very close a few years ago to losing our charter. And that would be the loss of a great hub. In Spencerville, I believe the Legion was. First built, it was an old railroad station that was moved in and some of the. I don't know if they're already living, coming members of the Legion now. But that was moved over and added on to and and the Legion's been a hub in our community a long time. Our current need is our kitchen. And you know, you you kind of struggle with struggle a little bit to. Meet our health, health unit inspections, et cetera, as well, but. So we know that this is imminent, we're we're going to need to upgrade that that kitchen. So I just offer you a couple of pictures. They're a little scratchy here, but the flooring needs to be replaced. We need, we need new stoves, at least one good new stove because previously purchased those stoves with that kind of stove top, they don't heat up fast enough with the water. It can take all day to boil the water with potatoes. When we do a dinner, so we're looking at that, the grill only works half of it. I mean, they've been around for quite a while, these things. There's just a little shot of a kitchen cupboard. And again, flooring. We. New sinks will ensure just more efficient practice. We'd like to get a stainless steel set of sinks, usually come in threes and they're a little deeper. I think that's about it for them. For what we need replaced. We have not put together a definite budget yet, but it certainly exceeds anything we would be asking from a council, but. We're gonna think about fifteen thousand. And we also have had the all of our fire extinguishers, et cetera. We've had an inspection and we know that we're looking at a cost there as well. But really, the purpose here is the kitchen. So. Are we've been able to keep up with our costs and do very well, we run four events a month. And that is almost the limit of our ability to fund rates. Of course, as you know, we're all volunteers. And we can't burn out our volunteers, and we can also, we don't want to compete with our businesses in town by offering too much. You know, so I think the balance is really good, we've got it right now. We really like it, but it took a long time for us to raise fifteen thousand dollars. We'll definitely have to have to have a campaign, but you could get a campaign offer us, that would be great. We also have a really skilled and enthusiastic team who are very dedicated to keeping our Legion vibrant, active, and supporting our our community and the veterans that we serve. Some really good cooks and we also have a lot of construction on the on the team. My husband, for example, you know, he built, he's built. How we've been built, so my son, I've seen, they have a lot of work in us, they, these guys know how to how to do things. So when it comes to the kitchen, you know, they're already talking, well, there's structures we'll keep and there's things that we can change and they're, they can do a lot of installation themselves, every kind of dedication that they would bring to this project. But fundraising for a larger amounts of money is a little bit tough. For our population. I think that's it, but you have any questions?
First, thank you for for the presentation, I'm gonna start with the first question on on this one, and I'm just a tiny bit perplexed, Mary. I had in front of me that the application is for flooring for a washroom. So the information that's provided in our package that that I I looked at had nothing. Nothing to do with anything that you brought forward, it it just.
Now, I I I have been confused myself, so there you go. What happened was, I guess, I think I got mixed up because I was encouraged to apply to the Port of Johnstown. And do a lot of back and forth with the border, with the Port of Johnstown, I realized that they they no longer have any community funds available. So that may be my my bad, actually. So I was then taking my Port of Johnstown and simply applying it here because there is no. We do need new flooring of bathrooms too, however, and and that would be the cost, so. It doesn't really. I don't know if it really matters where we apply the money. You know that we have needs and that we really want that facility to work for our community. People do rent the facility as well, and they do rent the kitchen, we don't really. We're not really set up for them in the kitchen right now, so. But 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 we do, we do rent them, so I don't know that. But that probably my confusion right there.
Just the I I I'm just thinking that everyone has to follow the same procedural guidelines when when making applications. You know, timelines, that sort of stuff, like, I know there's gonna be on here, there's one that that applied for and didn't didn't provide information from the year before and didn't didn't apply on time as well, and it's gonna have to go under consideration, people have made decisions based on on that as well, and my, I just want to look at staff and make sure that I'm correct in in saying that, like.
Through the chair, yes, we receive an application for funding for making a washroom for us. Okay, okay, but and but you know, of course, in regard to. You know, how do I, what what was going on? So the bathroom floor is also our, and so you can just almost use that picture there, we do need to replace that for us.
Okay.
So I just think that. Any any help? Appreciate, appreciate.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the presentation, Mary, I'm just gonna allow the the group some questions if if they if they have some first.
Through the chair, that's one to be apparently mindful applicants and committee that the application and the reporting of any grant fund have to use for the purpose of the grant. Right, not it, so I'm not really returning.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions? Or?
I mean, I guess just the obvious one would be, so if if funding was provided, would it still happen in this year or is that something?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's. Yes, every everything needs to learn. Okay, you know, we we saw down on some, so you want to be thinking for our year next year, it's something in September. And all of this is important to us in terms of. Being embedded as well, so the flooring is.
All right, thank you again, Mary, for your. Okay, so that ends it for the delegation and presentations part, and we will discuss those the night on later on, later than seven, so, okay, so here we go, our first consent agenda. All right, so. Items that are listed under consent agenda are considered routine. And they no longer require a further discussion and are enacted in one motion. The exception to this rule is that any member may request that that any item be pulled out of the consent agenda. And voted on separately, so so basically, I think I just want to make sure everybody's hundred percent clear because it's the first time in procedural that we'll be doing it. If any of the reports that are that are there, if you have questions about that, I mean, ideally, we would have, we would have done this in advance at this meeting, we would have done it when you write your report on Friday, you would have sent an email to ask to have something pulled out of consent agenda, and then we would have the presentation and the discussion on the floor in advance. It doesn't mean that you can't still do it tonight, anyone can do it, but ideally, it's meant to speed. It's meant to speed, speed things along, there are reports that are presented, they're there for public reading and view of. Thanks, everybody's clear on the consent agenda? So the recommendation is that. Consent agenda items be received as presented and I, and I think. That means, am I going along this correctly?
Through the chair, it outlined this for the first, the first meeting and I can provide this in future meetings as well.
They're gonna until we get.
Exactly.
Really comfortable with it. Yeah, and they're, and they are included under item eight still, right? But they will say consent on it and they won't be discussed at item eight unless you pull it.
Through the chair, correct, again, just for ease.
So, so I think worthwhile noting is the example. Then, that I sent, I, I asked for, I believe it was the, the. The treasury report. And the first quarter budget to vary its report to be lifted from, from consent agenda, I just, I wanted those reports discussed. For a little bit longer and, you know, when, while with this, this group, I guess. And not just passing the report, just making sure that everybody's also been at that. Okay, so I actually asked for B and B and C to be pulled out, they were originally in the consent, so. Everyone knows, so you can do that as well and you can still do it tonight as well if. If you feel fit to, to do that, so the recommendation is that the following consent agenda items be received as presented. So A is the twenty twenty three first quarter bylaw report. E is the twenty twenty three first quarter council remuneration report. C is the twenty twenty three first quarter facility stats report. D is the twenty twenty three first quarter facility maintenance report. And E is the twenty twenty three first quarter operations report. So having done the preamble, is there anyone at the table that wishes to have any item from A, B, C, D or E? Removed from consent agenda and discussed further at its line item number eight? Seeing that shaking down. So we're good, so do, so. So do we pass consent agenda now? Okay, and let me just get to that motion, then, is it written in our? Oh, it's the one that I read, it's the one that I read, okay, so, so the item that is on, on our, on our agenda page. The recommendation that I actually read, I need a mover for that, for that I. Moved by council Martell, seconded by council Ward, further discussion on, on the consent agenda then before we pass these five items. Hearing none, alright, all in favor? Alright, so now we are on to number seven, which is discussing items, community grants and donations. Okay, here we go, let's fund again. Having done this, the deputy mayor and myself have, have. You know, been on council, previous terms of council and we've gone through this exercise. I don't think you have on the CDC, I don't know if it's part of the CDC. It's a, it's a challenging discussion, it's challenging to try to, to try to get five or six people. Ultimately on, on the same page when it comes to what we're going to support and how we're gonna allocate. Those, so I racked my brain this weekend, I, I tried really hard to come up with something that I think. That I think has the potential to work. And, and that would be that, I know we've all gone through, through the list, we've gone through them probably at nauseam. The way that, the way that I did it, it seemed to make the most sense to me was down the left hand, the left hand column. If, if you start at the first one and you put a one beside it, you put a two beside the next one, you put a three beside the next one, they'll all have a number, not a name. And when we discuss them, we can use the, the number, because I'm gonna ask everybody to say their top five numbers. The per dollar values. And I'll try to narrow down the dollar value number. From those and, and I'm hopeful out of those top five that you, that you, that we all have. That there's a lot of matching of our top five. And I think if we can, if we can narrow down off the, the bat, that may get us to. When I take my top five and I add my top five together, it takes ten thousand. So it leaves us, it leaves us five thousand dollars to spread out among the, the remaining fourteen, fourteen, so. You know, that may, that may make the discussion narrower for the last part of it. I'm hopeful, I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm hopeful, so, yes. Go ahead, you can, you can, you can throw water on my fire.
That today, like today, I did receive a partially incomplete. Evaluation form from the one group that, that failed at that point in time when I voted for a complete evaluation form. However, it's still not completely satisfactory in terms of our evaluation form recently. So if you want to know the as per second form of accountability. Reports will be submitted by somebody very first, which is. As long as they're submitted fully, if they fail to do that, submit a report. If it's right at that time, they may be eligible for a future, but.
And are we talking? I mean, that's going to have an impact, I think, on, it's, may have an impact on how I view things, are we talking about number five then?
The other two submitted late. But they did have completed application, number five is partially.
Estelle is incomplete and. And so three was late as well.
Three and sixteen were late.
And sixteen were late, and that was the eval forms, not the.
The evaluation form that showed their.
But they're full, they're full sum and they've been received in advance of, of this, okay, so they're received, but late. Okay, good, good, did you wanna, were you? Uh, yeah, I, I left, I, just for clarity, I numbered everything. Down the list, because they're, they're receiving zero dollars anyways, we'll do the in kind separately, this is just.
I just, I just, I just wanted to make sure. Every, everybody has an unbroken list.
Yeah, everybody numbers just, number them all. Yeah, number them all regardless, yeah, number them all at one to nineteen down the list. Because if you only get to seventeen, you get Houston, we got a problem, well, we're probably okay up till fifteen. Okay, has everybody got that? Alright, does anyone want to, to start with their top five, five numbers? Sorry.
Through the chair, I mentioned approval in the plane later on, that actually been noted.
Oh, it's telling me to the staff, right? There's two outside the scope, I think, right? Friends of the library as well, as well.
I just mean the, the S P C C that is outside of, in line. Donations, that's the only one that's outside of our delegates.
The S P C C? The S P C C is definitely, is outside, I, I have, I don't. Like, yes, like we need more information on what exactly the ask was for, for staff from friends of the library one, I don't have a problem. With it, I just thought it was unclear and I thought that it was considered outside the scope as well.
Through the chair, it's one that normally fall within the prescribed five categories. The friend of the library there is very straightforward, they keep facilities that is important here for. One, two hours each trying to read a book.
Right. Right, okay, yeah, I, I just, in my notes, I had yes, more info, like I have a big yes beside it, but I just put more info and I had it as being outside of scope, so. Okay, so not outside of scope.
Through the chair, is it general, since we do all that facility and rent the library? Do you need that assistance carrying on?
Yeah, hundred percent, no, hundred percent. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I think folks do a great job at the library, so any help that we can give is great. But I think we do definitely have to have a conversation about. Exactly what the S P C C is asking for in that, because that sounds like thousands of dollars of consulting report to me. It doesn't sound like something that our staff has the ability or knowledge to do. But I will have that discussion once we get through what I think is gonna be the. The difficult part, so let me give my hands up a handy little graph here. So does anyone want to start?
Should.
You wanna just go? Like your, like top, so name the number of the valve.
Okay, top five, sure. Number two. Two thousand dollars. Number seven.
Yes.
Two thousand dollars. Number eight. Two thousand dollars. Number nine. Two thousand dollars. Number thirteen. Two thousand dollars.
Anyone else wanna go?
I had number two for two thousand dollars. I had number seven for fifteen hundred dollars. Number eight for fifteen hundred dollars. I, I do have number thirteen for two thousand dollars. And I, what's that, one more? I had, I, I have number one for five hundred dollars, actually.
Those are your top fives.
I had number two for two thousand dollars. I had number seven for two thousand dollars. I had connect youth, I must think like Steve, I have them down for two thousand dollars.
Which number is connect youth, is it eight?
And I had. Number thirteen for two thousand dollars.
I have that as four, yeah.
And, and those incorporated, number fourteen or sixteen rather, so.
Alright, I'll walk the other way then, council Martell.
Add number two for two thousand. Number eight for two thousand. Number nine for twenty five hundred. Number thirteen for two thousand. And number eighteen for two thousand.
Number eighteen for two thousand. Oh, that's much better, okay, good, and Karen?
I had the number one for a thousand.
Okay.
Number two for two thousand. Number eight for twenty five hundred. Number nine for two thousand. And sixteen for fifteen hundred.
Well, I think we're, we're narrowing it down, I mean, that's. That's good, so, so I think it's safe to say that. That number two, the, the food bank got consensus from, from, oh, sorry, I didn't do mine, did I do mine? I didn't do mine, I'm sorry, my apologies, so, so my number. Yeah, I have all my numbers written, written in on mine, so bear with me for a second, so number two was two thousand for me, if anybody's keeping track. I, my next one was number seven, I had, I had two thousand at it. As well, number eight, I had fifteen hundred. Number nine, I had twenty five hundred. Excuse me, and then number thirteen, I had two thousand. So. The. Okay, so the next one down that we all, that everybody spoke to is number eight. Correct? If anybody was, I kept track of these all the way across. We have two fifteen hundreds, we have three two thousands and one twenty five hundred.
One, but number seven.
Uh, there's only four on that one, this one has six, six of us are. Are on number eight. And who, two that did fifteen hundred. Three that did two thousand and one that did twenty five hundred. So I mean, the average is about two thousand dollars. So would everybody be okay with going to the average then, which would be two thousand? Is everybody okay with that?
Pretty funny, I had it down for fifteen and after, after your presentation, I'm gonna go up to two thousand.
Discussion? Everybody good with that? Okay, so then. The next one with the most numbers is thirteen and the consensus across number thirteen is all two thousands. Except for the only one that didn't have it ranked at all is, Karen didn't have it in her rank, but the other five. Had number thirteen is two thousand. So is it safe to say then that, that we can go to two thousand on that one then? Or you wanna go slightly less or you wanna keep it at two thousand? Consensus, running aheads discussion.
Two thousand, knowing that. Anyways, I think there's aspects to that that, you know, may not get into this year, but there's things that they should do that they're doing that have the beneficial.
And down that way, nodding heads, okay, so that's a lot, two thousand to that one then as well, like it's just a six.
That's number thirteen.
Number thirteen, yeah. Okay, this is working out somewhat. Okay, what's next on my graph is number seven. Four, four people commented on it, three at two thousand, one at fifteen hundred, two didn't have it on their list. But it's obviously, you know, shall we do two, two more of our next popular ones then and see what falls in line?
Sure, I mean, if it fills in, I can talk about number seven as far, I was the little person, if you will, there, that I was trying to free up, because. There's such a, there's obviously a lot of dollars here being asked for and I'm really trying to keep us with the, the budget that we assigned, so. You know, that's why I went a little less, but, but most of that, they were asking for it.
Yeah, I, good. So let's.
Number two for two thousand.
So two, two's at two thousand, eight's at two thousand, thirteen's at two thousand. Next that we're discussing is the, the one that had the most spots, which is seven. And, and it had four, so it still has a majority. Three two thousands, one fifteen hundred. So I think looking to Joe and looking to Karen. Is there a dollar value that you guys would apply to, to, to seven? If it's zero, it's zero.
No, I'm just looking at the way we went in originally with the, the shit numbers from one guy would have had that number one hundred twelve, probably.
Right. Right. If it was number eleven, what, what would the value that you would have assigned to it be, that's all, that's my.
I'd probably go fifty percent, thousand.
Seven thousand. And. 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 So would everybody be comfortable with fifteen hundred then?
For number seven?
We have our island on number seven. So. Oh. Yes, sorry.
No, no, right.
Right. I thought, I thought we wanted. But if you want anyone. Are you sure? Don't let us mess up. So I, I did, what I, what I did was the, we could make it sixteen hundred actually if we wanted, but I I just added the six, the six numbers together to come up to ninety-five hundred. And then I divided, divided that by six and went with the average, which was fifteen hundred and eighty-three dollars, so. So we could round that to sixteen hundred, we could make it two thousand, we could make it less, just trying to come. It this, it's gonna be a tough process to arrive at a bunch of numbers to.
What, what did you have Karen?
Um, on the weekend.
I didn't have that one.
You didn't have that?
Anyone strongly? Want to change?
I guess. It's gonna get us over the hump. Yeah.
What do you said, you'll get fifteen as well, so you're taking five hundred away. So it's a, I'll take, oh, I have it at two thousand, I'll take fifteen hundred away. So it's over this, but you already had fifteen, Joe, are you comfortable with fifteen?
I can work with fifteen, sorry.
Okay, and no, and we can, once we come to a final. Number on these, we can, we can. Adjust them, let's just try to get some consensus around the big ones. I just figured if we can knock ten thousand dollars off the list right away, then we can sort of work on how we wanna support the last. The last group, so. Um. I'm hopeful since this process works. Um, Karen, you said okay to fifteen, yes? Yeah, okay, all right, so fifteen hundred then, let's, let's lock that in for now. Okay, and I don't think that there's clear consensus on any of the others, we had two on number sixteen. We had, uh, two on number one. And one on number eighteen.
There.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think we've done number nine, which it does have four.
Okay, you're right, it does, sorry, and that one, that that one is, um. That one is, uh, uh, clear as well, so. Um, okay, so I have two two thousands and two, thanks for that, CEO. Um, we have two two thousands and two twenty-five hundreds there. Um, with, with both, uh, counselor. Uh, Ward and Counselor Smale not including that in their list, is there a number that you could assign to that?
So either that, that was on my, so I, I was ready to get by my priority, but priorities I thought as well. Uh, that was my number six on the priority anyways, and I had a twenty-five hundred, so you could write that down.
Okay.
I had a two thousand.
Okay, so we have one, two. Three twenty-five hundreds and three two thousands, so twenty-two fifty.
Sure, you wanna do that, man?
Well, it's, I mean, we can change the numbers in the end, right? Like, we can add two fifty back to it, to, if we wanna top it up, I'm just trying to get us as close to the finish line. As we can and try to take away the difficulty, it's been a difficult discussion. Uh, over the years, so I'm trying. Is everyone okay if I, if I put in twenty-two fifty, or do you feel passionately that it should stay at twenty-five hundred?
Which, with, this is, uh.
We're on.
Yeah, yeah, I got two.
That is the bluegrass, and I have twenty-five. But I'm fine going to twenty-two fifty, just to get us moving forward in the discussion. Anyone?
I'm okay with doing.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it in this twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty?
I'm gonna put it in for twenty-two fifty, so with, with those top five. Right, so we're. Are you following this, but? From a, from a, from a dollar value standpoint, I mean, that's all. Yes. We're a nine, right now, we're at nine thousand seven hundred fifty, so we're close to what I, what I hope for, okay, all right. So then. So that means that we have, uh, how much left over? Yeah. Five thousand, how much?
Five thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Five thousand seven hundred and fifty? Two hundreds. Five thousand two hundred and fifty left. Okay. So then. Yes, yes.
But, but, Mr. Chair, we, we did allocate fifteen thousand to the budget. And. Your.
Yes.
Means it's, it's a committee, it's a lot of, okay, that entire fifteen thousand. It's all portion, you know, something that may arise. Further on in the year, it's just something to keep in mind.
I appreciate, I appreciate that guidance, thank you, yeah, very much, so. Um, and it, and it's worthwhile noting, I actually, it was a question that I had before this, and I, I had in my notes, and I should have asked, and I, I apologize for not asking. Because we did have issues with. With the digital. Uh, applications last year, are we aware? Of any? Digital pickups this year?
Through the sharing, we completely caught it, following the closing of our study. Um, there's always some groups that don't fully, uh, figure out what it is.
Yep.
Um, but ask for completed applications that are lawful, all where included. Working at the, the first.
Yeah, so just for information, last year was the volunteer center, who's not on here. Again, this year, actually, um, the volunteer center had actually placed their application, they, they had done it on time, they had done everything correctly. And just free chance. So I was talking to someone from the volunteer center last year, and they mentioned to me that. Um. That they put in their application, and like it was two days later that I was, you know, looking at the meeting, and I went, you're not on. And, and so then. Um. The township has the ability to audit the, the IT, and they found some kind of a, some kind of a glitch where, where their application got missed. And, and so we added them back. Back in, I think we might have even went two dozen over budget to, uh, to satisfy. To satisfy their, their ask, so, so that's why I wanted to ask that question, just to make sure that we don't run into that, um, issue. Um. Yeah, okay, good, and but, but a few other applications, none of them finalized then. Like, yeah, that's, okay, good. Okay, and we don't ha- I guess, as the CEO said, we don't have to allocate the full fifteen thousand either, so. Shall we go, is this? This seem. This seems to be working somewhat. Smoothly. Should we do our next three? Cuz I think our next three are, I'm gonna guess our next three are probably gonna be higher dollar value than lower dollar, dollar value. Does that seem like a reasonable way to do it? Oh, I think your next three.
You're next.
Do that, yeah, I, I was prioritizing my, what I thought was, uh, more impactful, impactful.
You can, you can prioritize it, that's okay, yeah. Um, is everybody nodding heads to proceed that way, is that okay?
Good question, yes, sure, how? How much of a stickler are we on paperwork, you know, we've got these blues and these reds here, they affect our decision. You know, we're gonna roots, it took the time to get the paperwork done, right, and you know, I, cuz I suck at paperwork, but.
But.
They did it well.
I can't answer, uh, I'll answer for me and how I come to my decisions, but I, I'll look to staff to answer, answer your question for me. Um, I think that, you know, it's taxpayer dollars that we're looking at. I think, um, accountability, I think transparency, when, when you use tax, taxpayer dollars for, you know, if it, if it was for. I don't know, paving the parking lot, and you decided to, uh, uh, you know, you have, you have a responsibility when you take that, to do that project. And then to submit on, as part of that package, to submit. Uh, how much, you know, what, what you did, when you did it, or how, and how you did it, why utilize those funds. And, and for me, that's, that's as important as, as anything in this whole process, it's. Taxpayer dollars that we're actually using to do this, to do this grant funding, so I'm gonna look to staff, that's my, my interpretation of it, but I'm gonna look to staff. Cuz it's, I think ultimately probably staff's interpretation we should listen to.
Uh, truly cheering. On, uh, back in twenty eighteen, we actually incorporated more guidelines, liability, in the past, we didn't have the evaluation form as a requirement. And the cross, the fully at that time of increasing this howdy. Requirements for accountability. So staff, uh, and council over time updated policy to incorporate a little accountability portion, if you see it under point eight, there's more grants available. The expenditures of the funds, and of course, state of the schedule's planning, granted future years, you receive based on half the trade financials. This was the probability of the applicants. Um, so if you knew the full terms of the policy as well as the very long, uh, report as we shared earlier. We, we base it on this because. Those games that everyone has deadline, I provide. The application as well as the, uh, evaluation form when you receive a check. In the mail, as well as I send them, kind of reminders throughout the year, another one, the very first week of December. And again, following the new year, they have not, they, they had not, again, so there have been plenty of gentle reminders. But these are new. And we provide the memory and awareness, we have been at the community offices as well to go on beyond the term.
So confident in that, I think you can still make your decision based on how you choose to make your decision. Right, like how you base your decisions, I think completely up to you, the policy that's in front of you to help you shape that decision. Is, is up to you, but yeah. Correct, I think that's a, I think, I think that's fair to say, I can't advise you on how to make your decision, but I, I can certainly say that, you know, how you interpret that policy, how you take it is.
But through the chair, obviously, it does move this qualify when the, when the, when the ministry.
Again, the chair, based on interpretation, um. If you see section four, uh, the accountability and transparency portion of the policy. Um, the fact will act as a review by a reliable, necessary, that financial, not a wish. Reports will be committed to the township by Sunday the first. Up here, which there is, if the grant recipient fails to fully meet the development report. The township will then give time, not order the group, not eligible for future grant funding, and so it's time to pass by the work. And, I mean, also, they can supersede their own home, who did they associate?
Yeah. So, so saying that. Uh, number three and number sixteen were late in submitting, but they have submitted.
The chair, they have submitted, they are. Um, to the staff factory, and like all of the rest receives and reviews everything, they have completed all. The evaluation forms of the engagement group.
Right, and we, um, still have not, even though there's, there's been an attempt today, I think by the sounds of it. Um, by number five, to, to submit, still not fully to the satisfaction.
Really true, that's perfect, as well, that he refers, we all, the weekly section of all eight page, right, coming in from forty. Um, sections. Seven, applicants, applications received after the deadline, not considered for contact. But. Um, groups may be better consideration when they apply.
I think we've broken, I think we have broken the, the late application occasionally, but we certainly want, you know. I don't, personally, I don't see this qualifier, it's more of the, the, um, the evaluation and, and how you use the funds that you're seeing, that, that really matter most to me. I know it creates, uh, difficulty and more work for staff if they're not received in a timely fashion, but.
Yeah, through the chair, and very special ability, not to keep that off, submitted, and passed after your evaluation form, by December first. Will not be able to future company. Again, the most, um, maybe also.
Yeah.
It's more guidance.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, okay, so everybody's comfortable then with three more? Fixing three more that you want, you wanna support? Yeah, who wants to go first?
Sure, yeah, uh, my number one is, uh. And.
Ten, yeah, and dollar value?
Uh, one thousand.
Okay.
Uh, number two is seventeen.
Number. Oh, you're not, yeah, just say the number and then.
Okay, seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Five hundred.
Okay.
And, uh, number three, one thousand.
Okay, Chris, do you want a second?
Sure, um, I had number four for five hundred. I had, uh. Good. Um, I thought number six for, uh, five hundred as well. And I was thinking number. Uh. Just. The process. Uh, number ten for seven fifty is what I have.
Okay, and definitely.
I had number twelve for a thousand. Number sixteen. For a thousand. And number eighteen for a thousand.
Uh, uh, counselor. My turn.
Uh, number twelve for thousand. Number eighteen for one thousand. And number four for two fifty.
Hold on, um, in, in the first round. Counselor, I think I had you penned in for two thousand on number eighteen.
Did, we don't have that much now, right?
Yeah, you still have that.
There's a lot of things left on there.
Okay, not everything is gonna get supported.
We can always put it on, on standards, but I.
So two thousand or a thousand?
Two thousand, please.
So change it to a thousand. And what was your third, sort of?
The, uh, Spencer Mill, number four.
Number four, and that was five hundred?
It's for two fifty.
Two fifty. Hey. And Karen?
Uh, number one would be eighteen of a thousand.
Eighteen, sorry, yeah, uh, just don't say the number one if you wouldn't, sorry, just say the number that you're, yeah, thanks.
Uh. One. For a thousand.
Okay, keeping that one.
And. Sixteen. For a thousand.
Sixteen for that. And I had you. At fifty, so. Okay, so i- in my way, in my process of thinking, um. Uh, that we would, the, the, and, and you're renaming two that you've already, that you've already been on, been on, and I see how that. Yeah, those are your main, those are your mains, right, and I, and I, I hear. Hear where you're going with them. I was just thinking that it might fill in more blocks and we'd end up somewhere else, so, yeah, right.
Cuz, cuz, cuz I was gonna say, so the ones that I voted for before, you're still gonna keep though.
Okay.
I just want to make sure because it.
Yeah, I just filled in the graph.
I don't think I can, so we can. No, I, and it's, this is, so, so it's my first time trying, so, um.
All right, so for me. Um. I had, um, number eighteen at one thousand. And. I have number sixteen at one thousand. And I have. Number twelve at one thousand. Wait, does that get us any closer to? To a number, so there's. There's four out of, uh, number eighteen, which I believe is the agricultural society. Correct, so we, we have, um. A thousand, a thousand, a thousand, and a thousand there. I think that's our next, is anybody else keeping track of this? I have two, I have two at for number one, I have. Three for number four. Two for, yeah, that's, I'm correct in thinking that. Two for, yeah, that's, I'm correct in thinking that, right? So is it safe to say then that we could do eighteen? Do you, it's Chris and Wadi, uh sorry, counselor or. Counselor Ward and Counselor Smale. Um. You know, do you want to assign a dollar value for eighteen?
So uh sure, I mean, I can go broader than that, to be honest, because. You know, on my list still, and I still want to put them out there is twelve, sixteen, and eighteen, I do have a thousand for each of those as well, so I think that's in keeping with everybody else, but anyways.
Mm hmm. Yeah, source man.
Yeah, I'll put a thousand on number eighteen.
Okay, so can we assign then that dollar value of a thousand to the Spencerville Agricultural Society for now? And we can, once we get a total, then and we need to shift the numbers around, we can shift the numbers around, is everybody comfy with that? Okay, we're getting there. I think we're getting there. Um I don't think it's clear enough on any of the others for.
Number twelve.
Number twelve, we had three. Twelve, twelve, sixteen, twelve and sixteen, we have three. Oh, yeah, we do, okay, so let's go then to number twelve, and so. So I believe it's me, Joe, and Steve and that. But they're in there, Chris, you already said by thousand there as well, um. Uh Counselor Smale, thousand. And Karen?
I did have to list further down for a thousand.
For a thousand, okay. So so that's clear across the board for a thousand, let's put it in there for the thousand, and again. Will, once we've all done the average, if we need to move them around, we'll move the numbers around, is that that fair? Okay, so. The dollar value for me, CAO?
What respect to.
The total, the run, the running total at this point?
Running total, you have thirty two hundred and fifty.
Thirty two fifty, thirty two fifty left, um I think. I think number sixteen is probably. Right, has a lot of stars beside it right at the moment, uh. If I'm not mistaken, I think there's three one thousands and fifteen hundred there. You have my one thousand, so Counselor Martel on number sixteen.
I'm very happy to go to enjoy together. Thousand, so.
And that's across, and Karen, would you be okay with that coming down to a thousand?
Yeah.
And if we if we decide to bump it, we can, we can bump it, I just. We can negotiate the total numbers at the end, but I'm trying to rank them all at this point too, so.
Um.
Okay, so. What do we have left?
Twenty two fifty.
Twenty two fifty, okay, so before we go further. There's there's several things left to support, we have twenty two hundred and fifty dollars. Left of the eight items that we've supported, is everybody comfortable with the eight items at the dollar values that have been assigned to the to the top eight items at this point? Happy with the process, happy with the way that we're getting there? And if we if we take the twenty two fifty and we divide it out over however. I think the discussion now happens now of what do we want left, that there are lower priority supports, I'm assuming. And or if there are higher priority support to someone at the table, I think now is the time to really make the pitch, make the argument as to why it's supporting. I think we've knocked off the big big dogs and now we're into the more of the the smaller ones, is that a fair, Karen, like looking at the CAO?
Just here, I I wonder if. Maybe according to that, if there are any on the list, any of them that you're.
Big off?
Yes, that that potentially could be.
Yeah, okay, so obviously nobody has anything assigned to nineteen, so nineteen's off our list, nobody had anything assigned to fifteen, so fifteen's off our list. Um. Um, okay, so. Um I I can go, I'll I'll go ahead with a couple that I didn't, I have two or three on my list that I didn't assign dollar values to, so. Um. No, so for me, I didn't, I didn't assign a dollar value to, I'm gonna start at the top, I didn't assign a dollar value to number three. Um. I didn't assign a dollar value to number five. Screwed up, let's, no, I didn't, I didn't assign a dollar value to number eleven. I didn't assign a dollar value to number fourteen. And I didn't assign a dollar value to number. Seventeen. Okay, anybody else want to go?
Let you say seven.
Seventeen, I started up the top on my list, and so.
I also, so I can.
So just give me your X.
Yep, uh so X is we did, you know, three, number five, number fourteen, whatever seven.
One, fourteen, seventeen, okay, anyone else?
Thirty five and seventeen.
So Joe was three. Seventeen, okay, uh Karen?
It's three. Five. And seventeen.
Three, five, and seventeen, that seems, we're getting somewhat, um two of you here from three. Five. Five.
Eleven. And seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, and uh Counselor Smith?
Uh five, six, and eleven.
Six. Okay, so I think then. Um, the only one to assign uh value on number three is Counselor Smale, are you okay if we take that off for consideration? You want to make an argument in this to leave it on?
Well, I don't know if it's an argument up. But why, uh. My father was in the Civil War, the Asian, you know. It's all across Canada. And it's been going on since the war. I just feel leaves or something. People are trying to keep it up, but not too many veterans left in this world, so. My feeling is, even if it's five hundred dollars, it's something to help them.
Yeah, okay, um. Consensus is is, you know, to take it, to take it off. Um, and anyone else? On number three, you want to change your X?
No, I think, I I mean, it would be obviously, it's a, it's a, it's here, here, my hair is long, she read, but. I I just didn't think that any lesser value was gonna help them, if they're all, if they're getting accomplished this year, to be honest, so.
Number three is. Spencerville Legion, and and I and I. I think from my perspective, I heard a presentation about the kitchen, and the application was for the floor on the bathroom, so. Um. Think for me, I'm gonna leave my X, so.
But with my.
Okay, so just. Um. Down this way?
I believe you want to have.
X. Uh counsel.
I think that's for sales comment, very normal, it could happen for a while, I'm gonna stick with it.
Yeah, Karen, yeah, all right, so um with with all due respect to the folks there, I I think I'm gonna take three. Three of considerations for the time being. Um the next one is number five, which is the ATB club, uh nobody had a sign. And everybody's got an X on it at this point, so I think it's safe, everybody's comfortable with it. I I will say this about our AT club, ATV club, it's a fantastic club, they bring in. A ton of people in into our into our area, it it's unfortunate that. The evaluation isn't done, and the accountability and the transparency of the dollars received isn't isn't returned, I think. Um I don't know how everybody is, but this is a hard one for me to to not support, seeing the great work that they do and how how respectful they are of our trails and. And the great work they do, but they also have a responsibility uh to do the evaluations and the financials. Uh and and be open and transparent in how they use the taxpayer dollars, and unfortunately, that wasn't, that wasn't done, and. And hopefully, we get them there, and they'll be back next year uh with a new application, so. Um everybody's comfortable if we were moving five from the list, nodding heads, yes. Okay, so there goes two. Um, the next one that has mostly X is number seventeen, again, uh Counselor Smale. Um. Again, you have the, you have five hundred there. Um, and I I'm gonna go through everybody and see if they, you know, they want to keep their X or change their X, but. If they have. Parting for us, same thing, same thing.
You know, I I mean, I can see. The five hundred dollar, even for for that one, it's not, you know, it's it's, it is a. Like with them, I I could see that, but uh, you know, I mean, the, it's five hundred as well, but I know that doesn't get us where we want.
I'm giving my X as well, so so then down goes, okay, so seventeen's removed from consideration as well. Okay, well, we're narrowing, I think. So left on our list. Uh we have number one, we have number four. We have number six. We have number ten. We have number fourteen, number fifteen. And.
Number fifteen.
Ah, I said fifteen, sorry, fifteen, I should put a scratch for us, my apologies, folks.
It was number eleven?
Uh bear with me. Uh we do, yeah, number eleven is still in there, but it has three Xs. Um. Okay, so so we're getting there, right? And we still have twenty two fifty? Correct, we haven't changed that, I'm I'm trying, doing my best.
You're you're not changing that in the. Forty one hundred.
Hey, we're almost, we're almost there, there, we're almost there. All right, so somebody speak. To to a dollar value and why we should support something, then pick a number of those last couple and. And hammer it down, I I would say we have two supporting number one. Um. We have. Um. Two supporting. Number ten. And. I think that's it.
So I mean, for number ten, I was. I I I did have fifty percent of that value at at seven fifty.
I have you in at seven fifty, yeah. I have Counselor Smale at a thousand on that one, I have myself at a thousand. Um, uh one on that one as well. Anybody wants to talk about number ten?
I had five, I had a thousand, but I reduced it to give connect you to two thousand.
So five hundred?
Yeah.
Five hundred, just gonna get us there.
Or deliver the goals, okay.
So right, and so.
So so go, you're okay with seven fifty then?
The seven.
Okay, so then let's pen in seven fifty then. Fifteen hundred left, CAO? Yes.
Just, just.
Yeah, I know. Yes.
If you if you split her any parts. Fifty percent.
If we split all of them. So that's four. So what do we have, we have. Four, which which definitely has some support already. We have uh six. Support.
One.
We have one. Four, six, and we have. Um. Fourteen, fourteen. I have eleven and fourteen.
Four.
Okay, so but eleven has three Xs, is there anyone else? So I'm gonna ask a question to staff, I think. So have we in the past bought team uniforms for teams before? Or does Sarah usually buy the Johnstown Swim Teams uniforms? Because they certainly had uniforms last years, they look fan, I will say they look absolutely fantastic, they look wonderful, I just.
I I I I can ensure in the level of. Uh it's on. On the on the on the uniform. With permanent sort of.
And you maybe you can correct, my understanding is they raise money, they do barbecues, they support the swim event. Do the barbecue, raise the money, and that money goes back towards supporting the swim team, now I may be wrong in thinking that. But that in my mind is why I wanted to support buying a barbecue, that's because they're using proceeds they make from and with that barbecue. To support the kids in the swim team, that's why I came up with the thousand dollars. For the barbecue portion of of that ask, but not actually directly buying the uniforms, because I. Felt like buying uniforms, you know, then we, do we have a responsibility to to the partner swim team, do we have a responsibility to separate the winner of hockey, do we have a responsibility? To to all sports teams, and well, we see a lot of asks from a lot of folks at that, that was my. My only thing, I just saw the value in the barbecue, and if they wanted to use the funds they raised from using the barbecue to support the swim team, that's up to Sarah, so that was my. I thinking, I don't know how everyone else viewed it or thought about it, but. You, you're part of Sarah.
Uh yeah, and that's exactly how how those uh um Mr. Meredith. Sarah supports uh the swim team. Combination swim team will work pre-bankings. If they want to give it back, and then exchanges a budget there for. For the swim team, so much in it.
So if they choose to support and make them?
Yes, yeah.
And they're the officers, that's what they want of the barbecue forward, to raise money for. Things that go on, Sarah supports, right?
Okay, so, but I think you can. You know, but I didn't realize all that, so.
So we can take eleven off?
It goes up.
Is everybody, well, picking eleven on, so that? Um Counselor Martel.
I'm very comfortable, I have the same concern, it's just, you know, the number of. Of teams and, right, you know, you have big party, you have hockey.
Yeah, but but clearly, we're still supporting Sarah in the purchasing of of a of a barbecue, and how they choose to use that barbecue to fundraise, they could still get to their goal of five hundred dollars. They just have to use barbecue then. So. Fair, still supporting them, just not directly what they asked. Um, okay. So the only other one that I have, like I have an X on number fourteen, I don't even know what fourteen is. Um and we have, and we have, um. I believe Counselor uh Ward has an X on fourteen. Um but I think it's worthwhile to hear what everyone else thinks about this, um. I I think I think the discussion's very relevant, um uh you know, and I would like to know how everyone else feels on fourteen, so. Anyone want to start?
Yeah, uh I think it's a it's a great thing what those parents do, I I come on Facebook with them and uh. Some of the dedication we do for five hundred dollars, it's it's well worth it, this is that, for the headlights program, right?
Yeah, headlights, headlights kids, yeah. I mean, and I understand the the great work that 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 the Parents Council does, I I think it's fantastic that they do. They do the work that that they that they do, I just. You know, man, it seems like a a school board function or a health function for municipal grants and donations function, and I realize that. Parents Council puts it towards, um you know, situations that that, you know, are very difficult to remedy and may not have a remedy otherwise, so. So I can certainly change my my X uh to support this, uh if it is the will of the to. To adjust that number, but. You know. If you think it falls under other levels of a mandate, so. So here's more, let's hear some more. I still, I put you in for five, right?
Mm hmm.
Okay, so Counselor Martel, how do you, how do you feel about it?
Well, we used to have two schools. Now we've only got one, ground color supporter.
Okay, it's for the five hundred?
I can see five hundred happening.
Yeah, okay, um Karen?
I was saying for two fifty.
Okay. And um. Counselor Smith?
Well, I agree with Karen if I'm gonna get them out, and because I feel like you already, I think that the school board and the government should be stepping in. Put the bill for. Everybody pays taxes, so it's important, if we go with it, I'll go with two fifty.
Okay. Where where don't you have the N C A O?
Will we leave you at twelve hundred and fifty remaining people in the discussion with respect to.
So we're at twelve fifty before that?
Correct, I believe you have a thousand for Sarah.
Oh, we had seven fifty for Sarah. Which what number was Sarah? Ten, I have I have seven fifty on my on my average number, yeah. So we have fifteen hundred to to go, okay? Alright, we're getting there, so 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 we have fifteen hundred, and if we, so then we have twelve fifty. If we allot two fifty to. To number fourteen, correct?
Or a thousand.
Okay, well, we'll come back to that, let's just put the two fifty for now, and then you can monkey around with it afterwards, is that okay? Give you one shot and make an argument to to make some number changes, okay, that okay? So so we have three things left and we have twelve hundred and fifty dollars, correct? Okay. So. Um, number one, number four, and number six. Anyone wanna speak to any of them?
I would speak to number one.
Okay.
Um fetal alcohol syndrome is devastating for a lot of families, and in a lot of places, it's relatives who are. Dealing with the children that have fetal alcohol syndrome. So I think it's a great cause to be able to help them access supports.
Uh, uh, in in helping with that argument, I mean, you know, we were foster parents for. You know, in a better part of fifty years, and we saw so many children with with F A S and then various, I mean, it's a spectrum, you know, I mean. But they reworded that, but uh, I mean, I would love to put some money towards that, I mean, and I know that we're not looking at. You know, the thousand dollar mark, but that's kind of, I I always had assumed I was hoping for about five hundred dollars, I just uh, to help out, because uh. Like I said, there were times when even as foster parents, we could have used the help as well, and then uh, that's just nothing available, but it was a yeah, so.
Okay, like what this, that's what these grants are for, so.
I have foster children at my home, so I have more for, I would say five hundred.
Just change me to five hundred, so I will change my zero to five hundred.
I I had zero, but I got five hundred then.
And councillor Martel?
Yes, and they keep it fine every year, so.
Okay, so four and six. Four and six, right? So what do we have, we have the Spencerville Mill Foundation, and we have the Star Society left. And we have seven hundred and fifty bucks, okay? Anyone wanna make pitches to how to do this? You don't want any five hundred or two fifty? That's still splitting it.
I I had two fifty down for both of them.
Well, that that would lead us to fifty to put towards something else if we want.
I guess two fifty might go along with number fourteen, uh, as near.
That if everybody would agree to that, that that could change that. So, so. For number four, is that what you're saying? And number six? Alright, I just wanna go, so does somebody have a calculator open and five hundred? This is still, this is still not cement, but let's, let's just, cause we can. Discuss it still, now that we have a dollar value of if somebody feels that they wanna. They wanna move something from one to another, they can they can make that pitch if they feel, they feel sorry for that. They feel stronger, so are you ready? I'll read, I'll read them to you. I'll read them to you at what we what we have, not anything we don't have, okay? So under num- number one, five hundred dollars. Number two, two thousand dollars. Number four, two hundred and fifty dollars. Number six, two hundred and fifty dollars. Number seven, fifteen hundred dollars. Number eight, two thousand dollars. Number nine, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Number ten, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Number twelve, one thousand dollars. Number thirteen, two thousand dollars. Number fourteen, five hundred dollars. Number sixteen, one thousand dollars, and number eighteen, one thousand dollars. And that adds up to fifteen K, right?
I thought fourteen was going to fifty.
We change, we had seven hundred and fifty left. Right, we took two hundred and fifty of the seven fifty that was left, we added it to number fourteen to make it five hundred. And then we changed number four and number six to two fifty each, okay? Now. That though, these are the numbers, so I think. We'll give it, we'll give it one opportunity for everyone to make a pitch, if you wanna make a pitch to. You know, offer to take something from one and move it to another, and let's see how that goes, otherwise for me, I'm quite happy with these. These numbers, I think it's been a pretty good, strong discussion and. And it's almost as onerous as budget is, so. I lost sleep all weekend over this one, so. So you're good with the numbers, councillor Smell? Okay, and I am comfortable with them, is anyone not comfortable with them? So I'm just gonna poll, are you good with them?
I'm good.
Okay, and Chris, what'd you say, you're good, and Karen? Good, well done, alright. I will say, and I I, you know, it is fantastic to have nineteen applications. Seventeen, I guess technically, um, for. For funding in over thirty thousand dollars worth of asks, it shows, you know, how how needed the these funds are in our community. And and it certainly warrants an hour long or an hour and a half long discussion on. On how to divide up these amounts, these amounts go a long way towards supporting. These community groups, we heard from uh beacon bags at their delegation, what it would do, and we were all, I think we were all mesmerized for for the next hour or two after having that. That discussion, I I think, you know, uh, talking about this, the. Delegation from Marquee and and Amy, the the work that the group in Spencerville is already doing, they're they're doing a fantastic job, they just have to look and. See how many people they get out at their events, um, and like you guys said, and I'm very ignorant to. Foster life and foster children, but the need for for funding and funding isn't there to support those those families in need, I think that that's a good. It's a good, good argument to be made for that too, so so well, well done in that. Did you have something on C I C your hand with on?
Uh, just uh, uh, do a chair to to, but. The current community festival, never applied, nothing? I'm just kinda surprised because of the functions they run. Okay, thanks so much. Was there an application just not completed?
There was a very minor startup.
Was. For my own clarity, we did we give the money last year or did we not give the money last year? So they didn't have an evaluation form to fill in, right? From last year, I don't, I didn't see it on my list, but I wasn't sure. Did we ever, so did we ever get a fully? A fully finished evaluation form from twenty twenty-one?
Form submitted, I have to check on the level completed.
So, so my question would be. If they never did that. Would they have to do that in fulsome, right, they would, right, cause it's transparency, accountability of how you use, it's not in your pocket, it's. Not suggesting they're taking it, but they still need to be accountable of of how that's used, so, so. Before they could apply, again, they still have to get that, that that evaluation form. Uh completed, so can we check on that for them, so that that doesn't become a reason that they're not applying? Is that lack of that, maybe we can find somebody that'll get that application done, where that form done. Yeah.
Um, I did obviously for this report compared to last year's, and the other one that they have. In previous years, that didn't apply last year for crosshair.
I just, I think, you know, like, it it's right up the alley of these grants and donations, the festivals, that sort of thing, and and to not see an application. For me to not see an application on here, I like. I just, you know, I just wish that wish that we could support them, so, cause I think they're working hard and I think that they're doing a good job, and I think any of the dollars that we could have given them. Uh might have gone to good use, and I hate that it's a a lingering not filing of paperwork from two years ago that that prevents that application from that. Yeah, yeah, I know you do, I know, I know, but I gladly go and help them get done, just so that they can, you know, get some, so that it's all, well.
Well, I I think what happened in twenty twenty-two, that in the final twenty twenty-one, I would never limit to remember. Uh, about the live well, we changed, we kinda came back, and I said, I don't get. We got it, we said no, no, and we found out it from my, so, so. And that's in twenty twenty-one. That was twenty-five. Like, it's too bad, I I wish they would, I haven't. Like you said, you're doing great work, it's great, I'll do anything I can to help them. We're gonna help themselves.
It's it's certainly a needed, you know, you can see the need is out there from Girls Inc. to um. Connect Youth to Food Bank to, there's many, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of money, but you can make an enormous, enormous difference, so. Well done, good discussion. Well done, anyone else have anything else they wanna say before we move on, yes, here? Okay, um, we are moving on, do we need to do anything else, are we good? We're good with that, we can we can move on, so we can just. Yes, so, well. Um, and I I did, and I do, I'm gonna make a small note on the side of my page somewhere. Doesn't say a lot, but it just says question about the report, so, um. In mind, in my mind, again, I think we discussed this already, right, is. You know, maybe use the bathrooms, the shower, these at the arena, maybe some cleaning up of garbage or or. Uh, you know, reduce random free range or photocopying or or something, yeah, some yeah, screen clothes or something like that. Um, the report that, to me, the report that was being asked for. Um, by by Marquee and Gina is something that could, they could use funding for. Um, to apply towards that, towards that report for those things that they felt needed, but I'm not really sure that it's. Um, under community grants and donations to do the report for the for the business association. Um, on their needs for washrooms when they do events, like.
No, I I think, through the chair, I certainly think that it needs some, um. Further discussion and uh understanding of scope, and I think one of it, one of it is. Maybe, maybe that's not the proper word, is, uh, if they're looking for a number. Uh, uh, two day or or weekend festivals where you're looking at extended road closure within the village of Centerville. Where, you know, the main, the the main arteries are 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 forty-four and twenty-one, right through the heart of Centerville. Uh, that that presents some massive challenges, uh, with respect to that, and I think that that's where, um. You you know, certainly, um, incur that that committee is dealt with on board with that on method. And when the value, having, ha- having a study completed to to figure out how you're going to load. Uh, traffic, how you're going to utilize, you know, limited resources, I think that's some of the challenge. Uh, when when when. Mentioned it was time to wait, well, th- this needs to come up for for further discussion, and you know, whether whether. The areas are actually, uh. Uh, raised it or not, I think it just needs to be raised earlier and and to further, uh, you know, clarity and internal discussion received. And maybe something back to a a community barmer, some discussion.
Yeah, and I, uh, like, we went, I think you, you and I like the tree? Yeah, we lived a tree for the Google, uh, celebration and and the road, it was, it wasn't closed for days, it was closed for a couple hours. And and it was, you know, in that instance, there were a lot of people, like, it was, it was fantastic, it was great. To see so many people out, the lighting, the lighting of the, I I certainly support it that way, I don't know that I can get my brain around not having. Access those two roads for two days, um. Uh, without a very fulsome, you know, application report sitting in front of me that outlines. You know, why and what, how and all that sort of stuff, but I'm not sure that that's.
Yeah, and and and. Like, don't always do it, that that they're looking for, like, four to an hour closure. Or something like that, I think it's certainly, uh, far, far worse than what. You know, on a Friday or a a weekend event, but certainly, cer- certainly far more publicity, and that's where. The inferior is far more planning, has to have has to be placed, so with respect to the, uh, the to to the airwear within place, place. You know, you know. On the, on the hair grounds, uh, probably, but it, you know, you could be looking at, uh, and stuff that, hey, cause you. I I can hopefully say that's the thing, those things, we're not, we're not known for that.
Yeah, um, okay, so is it, is it, so, so as I was reminded earlier, the uh. The in line portion is is staff option. Right, staff, staff makes those decisions, so my question to to staff is what do you need from accounts? As far as direction, uh, with this, I.
Definitely right now is. Whether you want to further that discussion with respect. Succeed, they get further clarity on on what they're. Exactly looking for, cause it's still in in general, looking at a three hour closure, looking at closures from weekend. We witnessed, we did a completely different one, uh, scope, right, so I think it would be get a. A much better understanding of that scope and and bring something back for uh, for for committee to consider on. If they wanna receive some type of support, how that would be, uh, polished here. It it is a sort of.
So, um, this end, I've got a, I've got a nodding of heads for more information, is that, is that fair from everyone? Definitely, you're okay with getting some more information so that we can actually understand what her.
Yeah, what what they're asking or doing, yeah, I don't wanna deny it, so. I don't think we have a lot to say either, though, on on forty-four and twenty-one, do we?
Well, the, you can, that's that's certainly adds another major.
The, but it's so, but it's not E D R, it's used as a. So, yeah, so maybe the intricacies of that'll be figured out, when when you get the more info that we're giving you direction to. To go ahead and and do, and then if it needs to come back or creates the clarity you need, and it can can be made at a staff level, then great. If it doesn't, then you need to bring it back to committee, then we'll see it. Right? Okay, let's move on. Um. Let's go, let's go. Hey, even sure. Well, this is where it gets funky, because they just, we don't have reports now in here anymore, right? So. Thirty three or eighty? Be all right. And so then, uh, oh, sorry. Depends on what thirty three. Three, two. Okay, yeah, no, that's great. And so then if if we can have uh, the treasurer speak to this report, that would be fantastic.
Through the check. Uh, it's further information. Uh, it's Q one treasury observer for. Uh, score uh, reports in your package. So what is the financial for us, March thirty first, twenty twenty three? The long term debt schedule of March, when March thirty first, twenty twenty three. The capital status for this in March thirty first, twenty twenty three, and then the pre I reserve. Uh, only the water and sewer surplus is deducted finalized. Uh, the January twenty twenty three will be bound, will be adjusted and after the body is finalized. And council has a portion of the operating surplus. That'll be present, have all the entries from uh, M and P for your end, I'm just going through them. I have a couple of questions. And uh, after I get those booked, then you may you'll see. How much the operating surplus is and and how how would it uh, like allocated. Again, with the table that's in the form there, uh, maybe tax collection. I've seen our our uh, tax receivables decrease. Um, quite substantially, especially for prior years. Uh, I look at kind of the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three as being. Um, more of the current uh, current here and we're on track for. Collection of taxation. And it's nice to see some of those prior years uh, moved to. Pretty low numbers, especially with the fire. So as we go through the financial report, uh, again, uh. We don't have a final numbers for the equity investment in our cell report. Uh, to update those and significantly improve bank of closure. I mean, waiting on those those numbers as part of the the final eye. And then safely, actual capital assets. Um, moving on to long term debt, uh, just shows our quarterly payments. Uh, some of these payments are annual payments, so we only see the months and years, usually around September, October. Um, and as you can just kind of see by the by the schedule, we we do have uh. A good chunk of our our long term debt kind of coming off uh, in in twenty twenty four. So we would be just left with the infrastructure Ontario for the arena. And uh, and then um. The infrastructure Ontario, the administration is paid by U C. Okay, and we will likely have that some ventures as a result of that construction law, uh, but that will. Come more when projects starting everything. Uh, so for capital status, uh, kind of changes were poured up just a little bit. Um, I think we could launch again. I did a little bit easier for everybody to follow the the lines. Uh, but the one thing of note is uh, again, nine point three, that was our our approved capital budget, including everything. Kind of to all the water sewer workers paid by uh, user fees. Uh, we spent in the first quarter seven hundred eighty five thousand. Uh, a good chunk of that, that uh. In uh, for the Spencerville and Johnstown drainage. Uh, that's actually going to be moved uh, to twenty twenty two, as we did receive those invoices in uh. So that's part of my adjusting entries. So it'll just affect the the what we brought forward. Um, but other than that, uh, some of the smaller projects like the uh. Uh, turbid, the uh, lieser, I mix labs, a lot of that stuff we haven't seen. Uh, and and I completed those projects and same with the the lawn tractor. From we get farm supplies that's been purchased, so that uh. That project is. So everybody likes this, I will just uh, keep updating the status of the project and when it's complete, I'll put the date in. And I'll keep that running total, those that are going to be receiving here today expenses in aggregate and same with the how it does the budget. Uh, for reserves, um, I've got this uh. Uh, all of the water and sewer adjustments are in here as well, uh, along with the Q one interest. Uh, that is in our uh, Royal Bank uh, account. Uh, also on that dedicated capital reserve, uh, that's the portions of the. Uh, port management fee that is capital related. So that gets uh, deducted off of that uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollar for payment. And put right into the capital reserve. Um, once they have uh, once they have the final numbers, that to be allocated will be brought forward in deduction item. For council's discussion on how to allocate that uh, to the surplus. Any questions on the Q one reports?
I have a couple. Um, but I'll open it the table first, so we'll just go Karen anyways.
Uh, yeah, I just have one really, it's it's more of a a concern if we're holding back money. Uh, where is that on Mary Street? Is that right? Um, on our water sewer Mary. We're listening.
Yeah, we we just haven't spent it yet, so I think that's the work.
Twenty seven, one ninety eight, yeah. Now. Do we hold money back? We have issues here. Uh, road runs and I, you know, I'm glad I'm glad that. You people are here tonight. Um. This road was terrible and the reason being. Something street is from the traffic that they did last year with the payloads up and down with loads and loads of gravel here. Yeah, I like someone to take a look. If you go. Uh, Mary Street to Fourth Street is terrible. And that's, that was your run runway. I call it a runway. I seen it. I mean, it's fifteen, maybe twenty trips a day. It wasn't one or two. So I just want to know if we have any. Is there any way that we can get some some compensation back from that because of the way they handle that? I'm not sure.
I'll refer to director of operations. There is a there is a little backlog in team, so we do have uh, what typically when the when there's a patient. Uh, be a lock server staff and uh, be a contract administrator and the effects identified. Uh, and and then look for a conversation that.
Okay, because you're not, you walk with sort of truly chair to the. The operation agent. You're not getting, you won't be doing the walk walk through on 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 Mary Street and and suffice. It's the fourth street, that's all.
So 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 through the, through the chair, if you recall last fall, there were a couple of concerns raised with respect. Five is creating at the intersection, I believe, on College Drive and uh, seven. Those those items were certainly related to contractor and they they will be uh. They they've imposed that and they will be making the uh, some some offness uh, when it occurs to that area. Um, if there is uh, damage with respect to upper part of Mary in in around fourth street. Uh, certainly we'll ask staff look at that and be able to back start the construction project, assuming it brings that up to the under back. But but in in all fairness, that's the perfect word of. Anything in around Mary Street, fourth as a result of.
Well, you just walking down the road, I mean, it's over here, where you hear something, we drive here all the time. That road was never like this. Last year. Never. In all fairness.
Survive, survive, did not have the greatest base before the project started. No, no, no doubt that we we.
I'm not saying survive, I'm saying right here, son. That's all I'm saying. Th- this here, it just boom, 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 it's all cracked and it was never like that last year and it's because of the weight it was here. And because it's the same as here as it is over on fourth, if you go on Elizabeth Street and forth, it's as smooth as anything, because there was no heavy traffic. That's all I'm saying. If we could look into it, that's all.
Yeah, I I don't like, I think staff uh, share the same concerns about about damage caused from the construction process and. Let's leave it in their hands. I think, you know, they'll they'll make sure that they look at the areas that have been utilized and and if there are things that need to be fixed, the staff will. Staff will take care of that. I know we program, I'm sure if. And when that is needed. Um, good, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I had a couple. Uh. Sorry, did I miss you guys? Yes.
Okay, go ahead. No, you guys, you guys go ahead. It's, I'm not supposed to ask questions to those guys. Those are the guys who are like, those are the guy discussions. So thanks for reminding. No problems.
You're at my back and I forgot all about you, so it's.
So I mean, I did have one question that that the C A O was so kind to answer to me, but I think it's important to note, like, you know, I'd asked about that total ranch road and uh. And and had we received uh, funding, not funding, I guess, the the, was it in the budget for North Granville? Or there half of it, and so that's been approved. So it was, appreciate that. That's good to know that hopefully we get that one moved on, which is uh. Can be been good for that area as well, sure. Um, and and one thing that I didn't really ask, it was more, it's more of a comment is. Is, you know, we're we're, you know, some hundred eighty five thousand dollars of nine point three million spent and. And we we saw similar thing, we're looking at sort of the port projects and and, you know, I don't know, um, you know, the the port is a business, it's just run differently and then there's a conversation. There, I don't know if there's anything we can do on our our side to try and see if we can level the loads, that we can not not, you know. Introduce so much of staff's capacity in seventy five percent of the year to do ninety five percent of the job potentially, that we can do from a level perspective, but. You know, we'll see if there's something we can help with on that, I just want.
I think through the chairs, it is just a function of of when tenders were. Um, for the work was 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 done and it all happens in the mid. You know, or early summer or late spring to through summer to get this done. So. It's uh, it's really, and and a lot of that is tied up in in that kind of roachy project. So that's, that's over fifty percent of the budget on the month project. So. Um, but it is nice that uh, the other projects, that the other drainage projects can start earlier and and then. We we can get them done and uh, we'll have a discussion for committing uh, around uh, June. Uh, will be around that's the only thing um, from from a treasure, which factor is with a lot. Uh, coming around your end, which is like what happened with the sensible. And Johnson Green projects. And I just want to make sure that our factors are really deep. Uh, so that.
Uh, okay, so going back to page uh, uh, report page, uh, thirty three and one forty. It's the receivables. Uh, page, so twenty twenty three's uh, alone at at a million sixty one. Um. Compared to to the year before, it's it's about sixty K higher, which isn't really over, it's not overlapped by any stretch, right? And and the others have come down uh, quite quite well. And that million, that million, as the quarters go on, will like after or after August, that number will go down again. Is that we expect? Yeah.
And and it's uh, that's just based on the interim building. So and when I generate these reports, I take this now trial and high. So we have still continued to receive money. So and and any, and we uh, anything that's received after March thirty first um, is. Okay, well.
Yep, uh, page thirty four, which is the the next one, the um, uh, the uh, equity investments in our cell and port. Um, the accrued landfill uh, number, um, are those place filler numbers? Will they be adjusted?
They will be once the I was complete.
Yeah, so those no, the numbers on this page will. Will change because the equity uh, in the port will go up the, right? Yeah, so.
But you need the Q two.
Yeah.
Uh, reports, so have a final.
Okay, that's, that was my question. Uh, for there and I think it's worthwhile noting um, on page thirty five, that there are three things, two, five and six of the long term debt schedule. Uh, that will come off uh, at various points next. Next year as well, right? Like there's uh, the remaining uh, part portion of the uh, the truck loan, the grader and and fire communications equipment. Um, and and it's also worth noting, we we don't seem to to know it often, but but I think. Um, you know, seventy, nine are all paid. We we put the money out, I I believe is the way that it worked, but um, you know, accounting pays the loan for the MS station in Johnstown. Um, through their uh, lease agreement that they have, and then the benefiting farmers are responsible to pay. Uh, those portions and and continue to pay those portions as well. So so ultimately. That as much as it's on our debt schedule really doesn't impact us and the and two, five and six will be coming off at some point next year. Uh, as well. So from that standpoint, uh, the construction projects will go on there as the others are falling off. So. So it's well managed and well timed.
Yeah. I think through the chair, like, what you'll see. For your schedule long term debt in this nature, there will be lower number of items, but those type to long term infrastructure. Uh, projects.
Yeah.
The prudent way to.
Yeah.
Behind this.
Yeah, some things can board. You can see. Yeah, we'll, yeah. Twenty twenty six longer, right? Yes, or you're, that's good. Yeah, um, I I will, I will compliment the uh. The um, the the capital project status page, uh, I found reading through it was. I actually did, I think I did a double thumbs up last night, um, uh, when I was, you know, firing through it. Um, and and it was easy to read. It sort of kept you up to date and let you know where you were. It was, I really like it. So uh, just to compliment the staff on. On on that one and um. The deputy in in his um. Um. Under the breath talking, mentioned that um. There was, there was two hundred and fifty K that went into the port uh, reserve. Um, to the capital side of the port reserve when you were doing the end of your of your presentation. Um, from that out allotment, but I don't see where that actually is.
Okay, so the the million dollar uh, fee that we have, we take that at the quarter. So Q one is is two hundred and fifty thousand. Even the sixty thousand four hundred and fifteen, which is the transfer in, that's the capital portion of the uh. That payment.
So, so the other portion is where?
Is operated, so that would be in um. Uh, it's not in any of these. It would be in your cash on bank balance.
Right, it's in, it was in the bank balance. So so of that two hundred and fifty. Of that two hundred and fifty K, the sixty is there. So there'll be, there'll be, you know, two hundred and forty thousand at the end of the year and that. There's a transfer in from that million, right? Yeah.
And should interest rates fall, you could also have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of interest generated from them.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So Q one is is thirty thousand.
Oh, I love it.
Okay, uh, does anyone else have any questions regarding this report? Yes.
I'll, uh, duly chair to a treasurer. Our our receivables in such great shape is it because of the P A P? Are we putting more people on the P A P?
Yes.
And we're working on that, like, we're in. The staff is is trying to get as many people in here.
We we are.
And that, and that's why the one thing is why our receivers is why, okay. Good. Thank you so much. Good report.
Just for clarity, what's P A P?
Payment. Free offer.
No, it's okay. I I I just, when acronyms fly without a free, with free knowledge, I'm like, what exactly does that mean? So. Um, okay, I don't have uh, any further notes on on this at all. So what is that note? We do, we have to do anything with this? No, it's just report for receipt, right? So. And uh, thank you. And so then let's move on to the, it's the next one, right? The variance report, I think, is where we are. Yeah, you can just fly us through that one quick, uh, treasures.
We'll do it. Uh, so what we have in front of you is the Q one budget variance for. Um. As of March thirty first, twenty twenty three, normally you would figure that your expenses would. Uh, March thirty first, twenty twenty three, normally you would figure that your expenses would be twenty five percent of the year in total. Uh, for all the operating expenses. Uh, some of the expenditures are one time and do not follow the consistent pattern of one twelve per month. Uh, such as the twenty twenty previous full insurance premium. Uh, which we paid in April, uh, vehicle licensing, professional memberships and annuals for contract. Um, overall, the budget shows eighty four point five five percent remaining. Um, that's uh, as a result, you do not really start a capital program uh, until. Until May and when those are really starting to go in. Um. Uh, all all the budget transfers to reserves uh, have not been recorded yet, uh, just with the signing of the the budget approval. Um. So just some things of note, uh, in in the uh. In the report is the year to date fire department burn permits. Uh, are a little bit lower than the estimate of eight thousand, I did move uh, some over today, about three thousand. Uh, from from our um. PayPal account, which takes payments, so we're we're on shock for moving that budget. Uh, year to date building permit revenue was lower than anticipated due to lower permits received. Uh, both the strengths of the line and uh. Spends a little arena, I spent the same thing, and counting revenues were higher. So taxation revenue that represents fifty percent of the tax loans that's calculated. Our accounting system does not have a functionality to separate the county and education money amounts. Uh, taxation revenues don't never have varies since it is determined by the the tax rate and set with annual. Um, the tax accounting system determines the amount of separated values at the final calculated billing in August. Then once. All the current actually. Some variances of note in in the operating expenses. Is uh, public works vehicle expense budget is sixty eight point one eight. Uh, percent for me mainly due to repair service sidewalk unit and annual license renewed paid in March. Shop expenses and fuel expenses is sixty six point nine three remaining, mainly due to increased fuel costs. Uh, related to increase which are control events. And the winter control budget has one seven point nine six budget remaining. Um, due to increased events and additional materials. Percentage is slightly lower than prior years, more acceptable percentage is between forty to forty five percent. But in a, in the case that we need it, we do have uh, money in. The reserve or winter control, so we haven't had to really uh, to do it yet, but. Uh, should we need it, if we have another winter like we have this winter, then we have. And then uh, just with the report. Um, unless there's any question about specific items, you you see what the year to date is what would have been um. At twenty twenty two, if you want, what our surplus was. And then what our surplus is now, so a little bit higher than it was the year before. Uh, however, our. Our project is still. So it is in there, that that number will change from. From where it was. Any questions?
Uh, I'm gonna open it, committee for thanking for the report, certainly again, um. You know, it's it's great to keep updated, I don't know that there's a lot of surprises in there. Um, uh, staff continues to do a good job in managing, managing the township, managing the funds as well, so. Uh, but I will, um, I think there may be a couple of questions, I'll just open it up and see, uh, councillor, smelly, have any questions?
No, I just want to commend them on a job well done, it's for the evening, understand, involves.
We're very good, thank you very much. Good, uh, my only one is 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 winter maintenance, um. Uh, and I know, you know, the winter was the winter it was, we can't control when the snowfall. Um, happens, um, you know, it does say. Uh, and uh, increased events and additional materials, um. You know, there are a lot of over, is there a lot of overtime in that? In that number?
I I have to. Then just to roll up, but I I would imagine, um. Just from what I've seen through cable, uh, definitely been.
A lot of weekend events, right? Yeah. Just, yeah, just, it is what it is what it is, but. Yeah, okay, uh, further further questions at all on on that one here, no, we're moving on, okay, good. So. Then we skip consents, correct? Because we've already passed them. And so then, so then I believe we are on to on to item eight H, correct? Am I right in thinking that? Yes, so um, oh, to the C A O to give us a little lead in then on the council response to the twenty twenty two audit questionnaire. Or is that to to the treasurer, my apologies, my apologies. I wasn't looking at it, sorry, I always go to you.
Uh, so the purpose of this was to, um, counsel to respond to the auditors Saturday, April third, twenty twenty three, for the twenty twenty five. Uh, completed by M N D O. Uh, so part of the annual I, uh, auditors said, uh. Sent a letter to us or for council, uh, with two questions on on there that, uh. They would, uh, they would like a response to. Um, staff has got the response letter, letter replicating prior year. Uh, response was and their. Policy implications, if we do have to have this uh, uh, by April seventh, twenty twenty three, for the final last audit. The recommendation that we that the committee. Uh, recommend that council authorize the mayor to sign the response letter to the auditors as a requirement.
Thank you for that. Um, okay, so audit, um, response letter, any questions to the other response letter?
I just, are these? Uh, these seem like the standard questions, right? They're not, yeah. It's just like, why are they asking?
Well, you're. Required answers to.
Just checking the boxes correctly.
Karen, any questions?
No.
Uh, two questions on my on my behalf, so. Um, one is is more clarity than it is question, and I believe. I believe it's probably outlined in in the wording of of the report at some point, but. Um, the the library files their own papers, correct? Do we sign off on libraries papers then? Does library sign off on their own papers? Is that, is that correct? And then, so the other one that we are part of is is the port management committee. The port uh, obviously does uh, an audit with with, I think it's M N P as well. Um, the the what we're signing off on the leather we're doing here is nothing in relationship. Uh, to the port, we will see something completely separate from from the board as well. Yeah. I don't know that we get a response letter though. Would it not be under normally under the signature of the mayor for that response letter to go back? Yeah, I mean, it's ultimately if it's my. Responsibility as CEO to decide, is it my responsibility with the port to do the same thing? I know it is with township, but. Okay, we just get that, can we just, sorry, sorry in advance, but can we just go and answer to that and and let me know, because I'm not necessarily. Comfortable with it's something that I should have seen when they, I certainly missed it, so. I mean, it may have been in there, I may have just lost it and not actually seen it, so, yeah. Um. The other thing that I had a question on, and and I don't think it applies to this one, but it'll probably apply to future ones. Is on page fifty eight of one forty bullet point number six, I believe it is, council approval of the dispersment sheet, we're changing. We changed. Approval moving forward, correct, to receiving. So this is the last time that we will see the word approval of that, does that have an impact when it comes to? Our responsibility and our oversight responsibility with with M and with M N P, um, the removal of the word approval. Uh, in in that to to C A O or to the treasurer.
Uh, through the uh, through the air, and I. I I would not anticipate that that it needs sort of significant, uh, respect to that. Given the fact that that council, uh, will will be still doing all of the uh.
So it'll, so the, uh, and and I apologize, I know that this isn't this one, I'm just trying to get the clarity moving forward. Uh, because if it's something that we changed that shouldn't have been changed, then I want to make sure, but so next year's would say council receives and. And the dispersment sheet receives and reviews the dispersment sheets.
I I would anticipate that would likely be, uh, that that council received and reviews, uh, dispersment sheets of all taxes.
Right, okay, all right, so we're we're fulfilling our duties still. By receiving and reviewing, and if there's something that that needs to be brought up, we still have that opportunity to to do that, we're just not actually. We already proved, really.
Correct, and and they they do a transaction live, so they are testing. Those transactions. The scope of of their audit work.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, because ultimately it's it's my signature that that goes on there, and I think I need to make sure that I feel comfortable. That my signature going on there is worded in a way in which it should be, so. Need to have that comfort level. I think for next year, I would feel more comfortable with that, and if that's something that we we need to. Have looked at differently, I don't want to create an issue when there really isn't one, but. Um, but I I did catch that in my reading through, because it seems small, but I don't want it to bite us, so. For sure, if we can just see clarity on that moving forward, and I know it doesn't affect this one, because we've approved them all up until. Now, so, um, or the wording has been that we've approved, so. Uh, just definitely if we can, that would be great, so. Okay, um, are we finished with that then? Is there a motion or anything on that? There is a moment. Um, where is it?
It's fifty six.
Nation, sorry, the committee recommend that council authorizes the mayor to sign the graphic response letter to the auditors as a requirement in the annual audit, I need more. Move back on somewhere to a second, of course, word on favor. Good, moving on then to. Um, I think this is street naming, isn't it? Yeah, okay, so naming the Lockmasters Meadow subdivision, really? Um. C A O clerk. I have the.
The chair staff who received our. Request. Lockmaster maybe a subdivision that's in the process of of the review. Considered, et cetera, et cetera, um, so this is a proposed three street names to coincide with three streets that he's proposing for his subdivision plan. Uh, and he's trying to recognize the owner, the previous, uh, former family of ours. Uh, the Charlotte loss. That previous owner, great grandfather was the one original Lockmasters of the area. Uh, so in coinciding with the family name as well as the username of the subdivision of Lockmaster Meadows. Uh, the following proposed Lockmaster Way, uh, Lock Twenty Sixth Street and Lockhouse Street. Uh, with that being his glitter, uh, the policy for any remaining municipal assets. Uh, requires to prevent this impacting the review and. Council for endorsement through revelation, there are sixty day period for public comment and recommendations. Uh, follows, once the sixty day period is up, if we corrected any positive, negative impact, we report back to the committee or.
Thanks, uh, clerk, all right, uh, questions, comments regarding the naming process, start with councillor's man.
That's what, um, so, I mean, uh, you know, I'm okay with it, there's there's, uh, everything has locked in there somewhere, and I wasn't sure if that was a, uh. You know, I mean, you know, it it might always be in some ways too much, but I'm still okay with it, that's the case, but. Was there any other naming convention, something we have as policies in general area for other things, and maybe maybe incorporate both of those things potentially?
Sure, there was one other means rejected, uh, that's got from the union, uh. Rejected for other reasons. Um, it is quite common for subdivisions in greater like areas, uh, to have very similar. Names, uh, revert back to and reference the. Vision was quite common, uh, that's quite often. Um, if maybe also two, they depend on that. There has been, we had a classification which is for.
Yeah, and and I have no desire to have this whole thing up for sure, you know, I love. I think I love Lockmaster Way, I just think the other two there might just be other options, but, uh, whatever.
Uh, thank you, um.
I know, I just think it's great to have something like that, the history behind it, it matters, so.
All right, um, I have a I have a couple of comments, I'm gonna echo, uh. Uh, council word a tiny little bit, although I feel one hundred percent. Get the shovels on the ground is the right way to go, but I just, uh, I think it's, it was very interesting read to to read, I have, I think in the the years that I've been. Uh, on council, I don't think we've ever gone through the the street naming policy process. Uh, so it was interesting for me to read through it, and if we have, I apologize, I might have missed reading that report. Um, but it's pretty exciting to get to this and and to echo you, it's the historical significance of Mr. Simpson's brought to the naming. Uh, I appreciate that value and, um, and helping to celebrate, um. You know, the heritage, I know ultimately the approval of the names seems to fall with council, when I read the. The policy, it clearly states that. Um, and I I would say that, uh. I certainly have one hundred percent support, you know, Mr. Simpson's, you know, uh, street names. My question, very similarly though to yours, is that. Um, Lockmaster Way, Lock Lock Twenty Sixth Street, Lockhouse Street are all very similar, and in our own policy on page sixty seven, it says that they must be. Sufficiently different, and I trust and I know that staff has done. Um, a good, a good job and and to get where they're at probably was difficult, that, my question was, are the three games, uh. Significantly significantly different enough? And and if they're not different enough, you know, there is mention of the great grandfather, who was the lock, the lock master. Um, unless his last name was Meadows, um, I, I, well, it very well could have been, um. Um, unless his last name was Meadows, um, you know, would one of, changing one of those names be seen as as appropriate, maybe? Uh, to honor that the person that's actually being named, and that's, that's more of a suggestion than than anything else, maybe it's not an appropriate name, I don't know. Um, but page sixty seven says they must be sufficiently different, are they sufficiently different? They don't feel that way. And I'm fine with them, I'm fine with them, I like it, but. Okay. Recommendation, all right.
Okay, yes, so so the 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 process is not just the public reviewing these and the names, they can also reject the ideas of the one you're saying, is that?
Share is public comment and feedback, so. And we follow on feedback and welcome, we lost three of any, um, we will run through them. The applicant, um, just being one thing got one way or the other. Um, if we don't support it, consider all of it. But it's right, um, you might destroy it today, but. It is to a name, transpired. So it it will be a process, it's we just need to keep this very big thought, we can take it as a product. And he doesn't have time, he just wants to get along, so we can kind of put down a plan. For the board.
It's interesting, you know, we we talk in this before I read the recommendation, it's 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 interesting that. You know, we talk about expediting the process, we talk about removing red tape, we talk about. You know, getting things moving along, and this seems to me that something that could have happened a long, long time ago. Uh, in the process, so that, you know, you don't, if he's waiting to get shovels in the ground, now he's waiting. At least, this is just a review period, then it has to come back after that, correct?
Yeah, the 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 this is not.
Okay, it's not, this doesn't have to be done to get, he could be digging right now and getting going.
I guess I certainly say, yeah. All the the the.
Okay, all right, good, thank you, all right, I was just struggling with this sixty day. Okay, so it's not holding up shuttles. Her, that's what I needed to hear, then I will zip the lips, thank you. Um, okay, so there is a recommendation here that committee recommends that council endorsed by resolution, the naming of three streets within the Lockmasters Meadow subdivision is Lockmaster Way. Lock Twenty Sixth Street and Lockhouse Street. After the sixty day review slash comment period, any mover? Moved by Wadi or Council Wadi Smith, seconded by. Uh, counselor, uh, Joe Martell, uh, further discussion, so.
Sorry, by agreeing to this. And we don't say we we were endorsing by resolution, the naming of these three streets as these names, then. I don't know, I I I think I said I'm not gonna hold things up, but I thought we were having this sixty year discussion. Uh, it's for a sixty year review period, so we can actually. Get. Possible.
The chair, so we, as per policy, we need endorsement of these days, so I put them forward. And then if we need. Um, once a week, we can do that, we can do with our applicants and with the staff to pity for additional counsel.
If, um, to staff, if council ward was so uncomfortable. With with moving this resolution, the recommendation forward, would this be an appropriate time to make a suggestion? The three names.
Well, certainly, certainly, if if the committee feels that the three names are too similar in nature or. And we certainly return the to the applicant, and that would provide, um. What I would say is that a a a additional uh reinforcement with respect to. You know, uh, some uh, some type of functional uh, meaning, it it feeling is that they they are too similar in nature. Okay, we 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 have had some growth. Uh, back and forth, uh, discussions, and there there are always, uh, seem to be a lock within the name. Uh, of of each and every, uh. Um, did we we didn't suggest a couple other, although it suggests the uh, uh, fascinating, so. If if community is not comfortable with respect to that, we can certainly. Um, basically, basically, what you're doing, you're endorsing the principle.
Yeah.
For my sixty day comment period. And then you have the opportunity to hear feedback, and if there's no real, um. The people, I mean, you just feel comfortable that. That the public has some perspective.
Right, so so I'm I'm, you know, okay, you know, like I said, you know, I don't love all the locks, if you will, but I'm comfortable with. The process, even, you know, that the public plus, you know, there's the sake of the sixty days, there are their ideas as well, and that. You know, your brothers share the same, don't not love with the naming, you know, everything the same way, then. You know, that's fine, but otherwise I'm okay with it too, so that's why I just was curious.
I'm I'm fine with with the names as well, I just was, and I know it's more of a staff function than a council function, but I know the approval. Of it of it is with with us and. And I think. As much as I'd like to see that person's last name as one of them, if this is what she came up with. This is what she came up with, so, uh, and I guess I'm fine with that too, so. Um, okay, so there is a recommendation, I've read it already, um, it's been moved and seconded, correct? Smiling in Martell, right? Um, all right, so further discussion, do you, you're good? Okay, I'm not gonna change anything with it either, I'm fine with it unless public picks it apart and lots of. Um, so then I'll call a question on favor. Okay, good. Uh, moving on then to. Uh, the. Firefighters. Uh, games, this is, so. Uh, Chief Moore isn't here tonight, but who will be speaking to to this?
The the chair, I think, will be called ourselves, get a quick uh overview, uh, sort of, uh. Long, long and short, it is, uh, June sixteen seventeenth, uh, this year. Hundred and eleven, uh. Easter material required, uh, convention will be placed. And and part of that, um, about the Saturday, uh, competition, and it will include. Requiring the close off, four sheets, uh, Gil Street, Dishaw, and Perry Street. Uh, Perry Street is sort of in front of the, uh, under, inside the blue hours, but, yeah. Position that, uh, that will be where where the lot of issues will take place, it's a wider. Paying organ, but we will give it teens of opportunity to, uh, several, somebody in, uh, we think, not racist, I'll be, uh. Uh, the, uh, pay portion, there is one driveway on. Perry Street. That will be walk on on the Saturday and actually not in that in in. A conversation about that, so they could, uh, need some alternate arrangements. But most importantly is, uh, looking to 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 ensure that the community also. Are in support of the games and support of those closures during that period. And to to have departments, um. Providing the the support with with Mary Gates, uh, uses the media center. There will be some, uh, some additional, uh. Um, set of time and expenses during that that time, and with the other item to view with respect to, uh. Uh, the the some some competitors, uh, travel reasonable distance to 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 attend. And typically part of that, the weekend, it's it's at end of location for for two days and we would, uh, we utilize. We need a second ball here, uh, instead of primary location. That's. How do you answer the, uh, general question that they made or has the name on? From all the specific details?
All right, good, no, that's great, fantastic, thank you, um, uh, councilman.
Guess I can assume my four year old granddaughter, aspiring firefighter is gonna be staying in the house at the house of party day at my place, so.
There you go. Counselor Stephen. Can't wait, uh, council.
Fantastic. We have chance of winning anything.
This chair, this chair alone, Karen, anything now?
I, um, I just put, uh, you know, I just have a couple of comments, I assume the chief would be here, but. It's, uh, it's pretty exciting to be hosting the, uh, E O F A convention, uh, in June. I don't remember, I I remember, uh, as a kid. Watching my dad, I think, practice and do a lot of the things, but I I can't remember us. Uh, when the last one we hosted was, we. I'm putting you on the spot. Yes, every decade or.
Really, I was on the host of it, that's probably, that's probably what I, that's probably what I remember anyway, so, um, you know, volunteer firefighters.
Uh, firefighters are the heart and soul of our community, they're volunteers, we should be celebrated once every a long time. Um, uh, it's fantastic for for our community to be able to host this convention. So I expect that there's gonna be, you know, large crowds and. And I'll say it this way, a great time had by many. Um. Add in, I think that I read that that there's the, um, that there's a parade planned, uh, the Norwood Band. And if I'm correct, and and thinking this, a ceremonial guard will be here as well, which which I think is is a bit of a coup to get to. To get that all done, right, so. Uh, inflatable for the kids, and of course, um, you know, uh, the chief has promised me that I get to fly. Uh, backseat in the flyover when, uh, when the R C A F, uh, does does the fly. Does the flyovers start in the game, so, uh, so I'm I'm holding them to that, I. I want to go on that plane, but, uh, what's that? I really hope not. Um, uh, it gets. A fantastic thing and 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 wonderful, so I believe that there is a recommendation with this. And, uh, and that's that committee recommends that council approve the requested support in order to host the twenty twenty three. Eastern Ontario Firefighters Association Convention in Edwardsburg Cardinal, can have a mover. Moved by Deputy Mayor, uh, Steve and, uh, seconded by Counselor Chris Ward, further discussion. None, all in favor? Good, moving on. To the member Amelia donation and display. Policy and, uh. Our. Uh, rec. Manager is still on vacation, so, um. I'm now I'm afraid to ask, speaking to it, so.
The policy that, uh. You know, hopefully with the communities other expectations.
The chair, um, following the universal community game discussion, um, tried it. By staff giving clear, maybe we can go with this. Uh, there was discussion on both traditional physical display as well as visual display, uh, we took that into consideration. Some community members felt very strong, whether it's either the private, you know, hybrid. Policy that incorporates both additional physical play and more people group play. Um, so with the current policy, it it was prayer, it's the donation, the playing, both traditional and physical play, retention, referring. Total items, um, what I do need to mean acceptable, uh, acceptable, sorry, um, timeframes for those. Plays, um, how the it will be displayed and, um. Ownership of this this place, so that way, um, you don't have any. Whether or not the idea would be owned by the town, and we can as long as to be what that we may. Um, I will apologize, I just noticed now that under the purpose reflection, the line of the policy, um, the. Last sentence of the first paragraph, instead of. The Amelia donations for the county's Cardinals, that's the arena, should say. I change their definition with the last minute, we don't remember which section was. As well as the last section of paragraph two, under the purpose should be. Definitely a study will be made, I guess, with me, remembering a lot of things, forgetting where I was. If you have any questions, but you know, it's really fairly into policy and. We can look around from there, and we'll talk over there. Uh, manager, perhaps creating facilities in.
Yeah, good, uh, I I, you know, as first, I, you know, want to make a. Uh, before we go into it, you know, it's it's certainly, um. I think near and dear for lots of people, as we saw the the hanging of the jerseys and the response from the community for the hanging of those jerseys has been. Extremely strong, um, certainly had lots of comments, lots of messages, and I saw the traffic that that it generated online, there's certainly a great deal of respect. Uh, for seeing the evidence being flown again, so, um. And what I want to say is that we had a pretty solid discussion around the table in regards to this. And I think the council or the council, that staff has really picked up. Um, on the nuances of all of that discussion and tried to make, you know, a very, uh, fulsome. Uh, policy that represents the viewpoints of almost everyone that spoke in regard to. Um, their concerns about about that and and incorporating in, um. You know, the wants of the staff, with the wants of council and and the wants of the community, I think that that this policy does a very good job. Um. Listening to all the voices and trying to trying to find find the middle ground for everyone, so. Um, having said that, I'm gonna open it for comments and questions or possible changes from from the group, and I do have a couple of comments at. The end of, if you're available, so, uh, Karen and.
I, I was hoping it's a great policy, I can get touched on, everything you talked about, you still get that. It's some of the physical. Things there, so you've got that real feel of good feeling, and then you've got this problem in storage as well, I think, digital. Staying on, it's really good.
Yeah, it's awesome. Uh, council.
Uh, through the chair, I think, great. Policy, love it. The intention to use this as a moving forward, or do you have any sort of sense of doing this retroactively? Those two years, we don't want to, we'd be asking the the donators to sign something, and I was in Spence ago on the weekend, and there was a lot of stuff. Do we have a plan with what we have now, and do there are a shale plan or?
Air of beauty.
But through the through the chair, I would say that we, you know. If if this policy passes as it is, we would slowly work through some of those, uh, items that are, uh, like honestly, but in the, uh. For for instance, in the special arena, that may may take that. You know, fifty warrants or, right, I I decided like that. Not, uh, you know, if that question had, we got the, uh, separate respect of. Putting a little kid on this. As we started looking through those in the beginning, we responded to the. Touch base with, uh, with some of those. This was yours, and you wanted to have. That's now that is, that that. See, that would be the, uh, that that would be the approach, that would be the sentiment.
Sort of loud. Your word, your positive, your wording is sometimes funny. Questions are good.
No, I'm good, yeah.
Uh, no, uh, thanks to C A O for covering what I was gonna ask about, actually, it's various to digitize it, so, no, that's good.
I'm good, I'm happy with the policy, it's fantastic.
Okay, I I, uh, have a couple of, as always, a couple of comments, couple of suggestions, um. Uh, uh, and and sort of counselor Martell hidden one of them for for me. The the first one, and just looking at, and and I don't like. I really don't like long bylaws, I really, I really don't, I really respect that this one's pretty short. Um, but I felt maybe. There might have been a couple more warehouses in this one, um, that, you know, council recognizes the historical significance. Um, you know, council recognizes and, you know, the the contribution to community spirit that sports teams bring, or, you know, that that. These, I don't know how the wording would go, it's not my job to write the wording, I just. I just think that maybe that bylaw could have been a little, you know, the. Pride we take, I think it should also recognize the pride that we take in our facilities and we and and our wish to keep them tidy. Uh, free and and clear from from clutter as well, because if those are in the 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 warehouses, when we do the operative. Um, then it it sort of lays out better a little bit for that for that operative, so, um. Uh, if if it's a bit, you know, again, I I don't like long ones, but if we could make just a couple more warehouses that that sort of. You know, were more the spirit of the discussion, I I think that I would appreciate. you know, were more the spirit of the discussion, I, I think that I would appreciate, a couple of changes there. Um, the only change in the entire bylaw, uh, for me, and it's gonna hit exactly on what Counselor Martell said, there, and I think what he was trying to say is that there's a ton of history in there. Um, and, and the bylaw says that it's only gonna stay for one year. And, um, if it's going to be implied retroactively, not, not just from this date forward, but if we're gonna go back and look at what's already in there, and it's only allowed to be there for one year. Uh, there won't be anything hanging in Spencerville Arena next year. And, and I struggle, I struggle vitally with, with that. This is, the intention of this was never to take away and to get things out of the arena. It was to support our heritage, uh, and, and our future. So, so for me, I struggle with, I struggle with the one-year designation if it's going to be applied retroactively and a lot of those things that are already in there and taken away. Um, and the next is, it's only gonna be there for one year. You know, I mean, I don't know how many years kids play hockey, but i- if it, and I don't, and I'm not sure how many banners, that kids actually won this year, whether it's one, five, six, eight or ten. Um, but, taking into consideration that there's a whole history in that Spencerville Arena. It's not overwhelmed with banners from last year. Um, uh, I would say maybe a, a little longer period than one year might, might be suitable. You know, it'd be nice if it was there for a couple of years of why you're playing hockey. So, I, you know, the change that I had asked for would be, uh, would be five years for banners. So, and I don't know because there isn't any, and there wasn't any, um, uh, information that suggested how many, requests for banner hanging there was, or any, you know, uh, numbers to go by. So I arbitrarily thought five years worth of hockey for the average kid. If they want a banner and pee wee might get them close to the end of their years of my hockey. So as they left, hockey, their banners would leave there with them and their teams. So, um, you know, I just thought maybe a little more thought could go into, into that portion of it. But I think, um, you know, the, the, the amount of work and the amount of thinking that went into the report is fantastic and the coverage that, that is done in there is, is really good, but the retroactive concerns me and the shortness of, of it only being one year concerns me. So. I like that. Let the C O speak first, cause I think it wants to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, with, with respect to the retroactive, uh, certainly the plan is not to go into the Spencerville Arena and start taking, you know, banners, uh, potentially, I don't know, maybe a very slow, uh, transition, but it, with respect to that, as, as, as new banners, uh, arrive in, in, in the request to raise them, at some point you would have to look at the existing banners that are in there, and say, uh, right, how they run their course. It's time for those banners to, yeah. In with respect to the one year, I think it's very important to note that, that, that the wording is may, not shall be on from here. It is a may and really does depend on, on, on the demand of the activity. You can say it, but there might be a few years that there, there are no banners to be raised. And there may be, there, there may be a few years where, we, we, we have, we have an amazing hockey program and there's ten banners give a lot, right? So I think, you know, some, some balance there. I don't think that the, that the intent of all this, that it's harder to pass, one year and stay on when it's just more, more or less preferred. You're going to have that for, for, for one year, likely more. But it, it, it does really depend on, you, you know, the, 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 the demand. And in, in, in the area you have. Yeah.
So you wanted that.
If that means a little bit of comfort.
And any, any, any bylaw can be changed if it doesn't work the way that it was supposed to work. So I trust staff and, in, in doing their job, I, you know, I certainly never wanna, micromanage. I just, those are the concerns that I had. And if you're telling me that those concerns, really have already been taken into consideration, then, I'm, I'm fine with that. If it doesn't work out the way that, the originally, then in my mind that it should be, then, then I'll, we'll have another discussion. I trust that. So, go, um, I guess, so,
that one year, does that mean that we're gonna, that trophy rack that I was part of and we go in there every, every day, will be gone? No, we're gonna keep that, trophy rack where it is for a while? What's that?
So.
There's a time capsule there. It's supposed to be open in twenty twenty-five. It's in there, which means a lot. I know, I know, but it's sentimental, makes it.
Well, no, but in, in, uh, through, through the chair, there, there, there has to be something within, in, in, in wording, we could, in, in fairness, we could have had a hundred and eighty-page document that, that, you know, outline every single step of the, of, of the process. Certainly the intent is not to, uh, in one day and remove all the trophies that are in that for the trophy case. Uh, and, and they're all common. But if there, you know, if there's a couple of days of trophies that, that, that come along, then it's time to probably look and see which one of those trophies may not be as prevalent as not to occur. And that, that one would be replaced and in, in, in that, I do, but exactly.
Absolutely.
Right, but like, or, it's certainly not.
Yes, don't dig that.
And hide it or vary it in a different location.
I'll never find it.
Never. Plan it for the state. Well, and, and you can make, then, then it makes the joke that, you know, if it's only gonna be one year and it's, you know, empty the case out at every year, you'd have to have a time capsule for every nine months. So.
I, 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 I think that it's a, because we developed, I think it's workable document. If, if, if we're coming to find out that. This is actually, you know, the way that it's being implemented, it can certainly be tried.
You can.
Trust, I trust.
I, um, um, and again, I, I, you know, and I don't know what I can do to beef up, to beef up the bylaw, but will we, will we see the bylaw again then?
Uh, through the chair, the will of the committee, if we'd like to read this after some changes for future, for the, what will be made, if you mean, or if you'd like to see changes after.
Yeah, um, it, it, this is me. And I, I, I haven't felt any support in my comments at all. So, I feel a little bit alone in those comments. So, um, but I'd like to hold if that's okay. If, uh, if anyone feels that there could be a little more beefing up of, of the word.
Well, it is a little bit sad, isn't it?
So, I totally can care what I ever thought of it from that perspective, but it would be nice to have that so that, uh, future council can also have that in mind. You can get the context of why we're doing that. So that's why, that's where as a support. Yeah, yeah, okay. So two nods. Good. Get going.
I'd like it. I wouldn't mind seeing a separation between, excuse me, sports banners and significant sports memorabilia. Cause you know, like, uh, I have a three championship and Leo Boyden's rookie sweater are two different. Yeah, one of them they want their.
One should never.
Yeah, which, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, hundred percent. I agree. But I think again, that, that's probably, you know, left for, staff. I think they understand. I don't think if anybody would ever touch Leo's sweater. If they're looking there, I don't, I don't think they would. So, uh, and if they did, we'd find it. Um, it's more, I think that my ask for showing up nods is just that we can rework that a little bit and see that by law, um, at the next, the next meeting, uh, with a couple more whereas is the sort of the criteria I would bear. So, you know, we came to, so. So nodding your heads that, that we could do that, uh, would, would be okay?
You, you, just for clarification, maybe? Next month, is there any other council with the additional warehouse boxes?
Uh, what came with your council? Council's fine for, for expedition. I, I think, I think everybody's clear. And I don't think anybody disagrees with what's going in, into it. It's just, we'd like to see it, a little bit more. I think, think if it was very emotional and it was a very difficult discussion, I think, maybe we'd come back to committee, but I think council's probably, probably fine. I don't think that committee member will feel any disrespect by not coming back. So. That's. Yeah, that way it doesn't slow, that way it doesn't slow it down. Yeah. Okay. And so do I still move the recommendation then? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, well, I don't know. Somebody else moves it, but that committee recommends that council adopt the proposed sports memorabilia donation and display policy as attached.
Through the chair, not comfortable if we add attached, it would be, uh, updated, faster as amended. Not really amended instead of, instead of being attached, we're comfortable with the whole movement of that. I'd say with changes of discussing.
With, with discussed changes. Yeah. Okay. So let me read it again. That committee recommends that council adopt the proposed sports memorabilia donation and display dispal- di- display policy, with discussed changes. Yes? Can you move her? Counselor, uh, John Martel second by Deputy Mayor Stephen Dilavah. Uh, further discussion? Now, all in favor? Good, done. Okay, um, we're getting there, guys. Guys, um, we are on. We can do it. I don't think there's any discussion on this one. Maybe there's a tiny bit. Um, item L, which is the Venter Bridge Channel Armoring Contract Execution, um, am I looking in the right direction? You or?
Sure, certainly.
Director of all summer. All right, let's go.
Through the chair, uh, this, uh, this action item is basically involving the Venter Bridge Channel Armored Contract Execution. The purpose to authorize a bear, clerk to execute the Venter Bridge Channel Armored Contract. Venter Bridge originally constructed nineteen seventy-nine under one rehabilitation in twenty thirteen. Uh, subsequent to that rehabilitation, they gave you on baskets that protect the northwest corner of the structure, uh, deteriorated, you can devote a while. Um, he told a bridge, they are expected in the bridge in twenty twenty-two, provided an assessment with that, this report. My cremations replaced, you know, you know, baskets with armor, foam, rather than baskets, again, provide a certain, which is. Um, an estimated seventy thousand dollars was provided to Piso to, uh, undertake the work. They developed a tender passage for the township, uh, which includes contract, uh, agreement. And it was issued by the township on the twenty-seventh. We had nine, uh, bonus with direct, uh, email sent with indications to, uh, put vision, then disclosed on March twenty-eighth in a public opening. There is only one component that provided a bid. It was Goldie Moore limited with, uh, sub total of forty-four thousand one hundred twenty dollars. A notable, you know, policy implications by law, twenty fifteen fifty-eight delegation of authority, delegates the awarders, uh, service and work contracts up to fifty thousand dollars or budget approval exists. However, in this circumstance, uh, the contract agreement indicates the mayor and the clerk would be authorized signatories, and council or the motion would be required. This group followed is basically the original assessment we had as a visual quote on the cost or replacing gave you on baskets, but they, you know, that was, three thousand dollars. There was some money spent for some engineering and drawings. And so brought down to forty-nine thousand dollars, uh, with the, the estimate on Piso and sending two thousand dollars, we whipped the forty-nine and made up the difference in, in, uh, in the budget. So, uh, financial considerations, the call seventy thousand dollar budgeted, uh, with forty-nine thousand and bid was forty-four one twenty. And with, uh, taxes forty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-five sixty, with what is even without the non-revated portion, uh, uh, payment account. And what's the side of the budget, what the fact was that the, contract was made by the, uh, uh, key building management with the, the assumption that the over fifty thousand part. So, it's written and was sent out that way. Um, the person that bid saw the contract, was written with the firm and the mayor signed. And so sub totally, that's what is actually.
Good. So, uh, questions from the group? Anyone? None. Uh, just one quick one. And so the forty-nine was, was funding for work that wasn't completed, correct?
Through the chair, the original assessment was fifty-three thousand dollars and it was forty-nine remaining from that went forward.
Okay, and, and so just so that I'm clear on it, we're using forty-four of that forty-nine? Or we're adding forty-four to the forty-nine?
Uh, the forty-nine thousand, student that we're whipping, we, it, it, it's under budget. It came in, so in essence, we've got to pay for it.
Right.
But we budgeted for the seventy-two thousand, so there is extra money in there and it does take in the government contract distribution and so forth also. So you got that. And contingent.
Yeah, because when I misunderstood when you were speaking, because I, I was then adding the forty-nine to forty-four, and making it ninety-three when I was thinking, no, we're only coming in at forty-four, which is considerably under. Yeah, it should be so. Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. Good. That enters it. No, I was just slightly confused for a sec. So, we're good. All right. There's a recommendation with this one and as well, if there's no questions, that, um, that, I have to read it. That committee recommends that council authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract document with Goldie Moore, undertake the project work moved by Deputy Mayor Stephen Dilavah, seconded by Counselor Chris Ward. Further discussion? Here none? All in favor? Good. Moving on to counselor inquiries and notices of motion. Does anyone have an inquiry or notice of motion?
I do, but it's gonna be quick.
Okay.
Mayor, um, I'd like to bring up, uh, in our next committee meeting. Uh, we had a couple, uh, tonight, it was, uh, under our, grant donation really didn't fit the criteria. So I'm hoping we could have a discussion, maybe, next year putting some kind of small capable, budget into, our, our budget for next year, maybe fifteen thousand that would offset something like today, four thousand dollars for the, for the, uh, for the, uh, suspended region, something like that. So I'll be, I'll be bringing that forward. I'd like, with a little bit more information, uh, Mr. C O, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And so you, you'd be bringing that forward at, the next committee, next, next, Aaron, yeah, May, like the A O one. This.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Um, further, I, I'm gonna, I will get through this. Um, uh, any further notices? Even those as well? Sorry, inquiries as well, right?
Yeah, I just, just an inquiry and, uh, don't need to answer it, obviously. Is there, I would like to know if there's any avoid of dollars that I just didn't see when I was looking at the budget again for, uh, for, uh, two hundred and fifty, actually, to be honest.
Okay, inquiry for two or amount of two hundred and dollars. I, I, sorry, I have to do it. More than to extend. I need somebody to do extend, move the motion to extend. Move the counselor's mail. Second, by Counselor or Deputy Mayor Dilavah on favor? Good. Okay. So you want to, just an inquiry, yeah, to see if, if, if there's a budget line in there essentially, so.
You.
Is that an answer? We have it at our hands or can we email that to him?
We, we, we can certainly, uh, send it here. They're, they're, they're.
Right.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just not sure.
So let's give it time and then we.
No, fair enough. It, it stemmed from a lot of our things we talked about today.
We can send that out as an information email that to everyone as long as no one replies, right?
Uh, that can be sent. Uh, as, as information.
Yeah, and, and nobody, nobody replies. So it's no replies, then, then it's no meeting. Okay?
Development in our, in our budget, yeah, the hundred and seven.
Yeah, that's why I was seeing, yeah, that's why I was. There is a whole file. Uh, and then there's probably a county, county special, you know, who was well there. So, uh, no mayor's report for tonight, um, there is no one, there's still no, um, we've lost, he's gone, Robin's gone. Yeah. Uh, so there's no question here. There's no one at the gallery. We have no closed session. Um, and so, moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Chris, Counselor Christopher, all in favor? We're, we're in German, ten o'clock, right in the bottom.
Well done.
Ten, ten, zero. Forty-five seconds. Forty-five seconds.
Thank you, Autumn.